Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Newburyport Zoning Board of Appeals for September 28th. It is the appointed hour, 7:00 PM. I want to take a moment and introduce myself and say welcome to all of our board members. And those members of the public that are logging on, we are, for the first time since we left each other's company in person, now actually able to see each other's faces. And some of you, I had to remember what you looked like. You know, I just saw a big letter like KS for Ken Swanton and WBC for Walter Bud Shannon. But it's nice now to put faces with voices and names and effort. And Greg, I see you as well. And I want to just say welcome to all the members of the ZBA. We are doing our best to migrate our way to a, to an in-person, back to normal, you know, paradigm for, for meetings. We're not quite there yet, but as an alternative to sitting in the senior center, if not the council chambers with masks on and compelling everyone to do the same, I think this is the next best step. So with that, allow me to say welcome. I'm going to, as we wait for members of the public who are logging on, I will take a moment and just go through our sort of preliminaries, our roll call. And for members of the, of the public who are just logging on now, if you're not familiar with a, a public hearing via Zoom or any public hearing for that matter, I'm going to take a moment to just very quickly walk through the, the lay of the land, as I like to say, so that you're all familiar with how the process works and how we as members of the zoning board of appeals conduct our business, whether it's in person or via Zoom. We begin by, we'll open our meeting, we'll take a roll call, we'll establish that we have a legal quorum, which is a minimum of four voting members in order to conduct the business of the board. And then we will get into public hearings. And when we do, we have a number of applications for members of the public that are, that are following along. If you go to the City of Newburyport's zoning board of appeals website, you will be able to click a link for not only our agenda, but also the supporting materials for each and every one of our applications. And in addition to that, you'll be able to follow along what the sequence of our docket is for this evening. Several of our enter, entered, several of our queued up docket hearings this evening will likely be continued. We have received requests from the applicants to continue to a subsequent hearing. And is, as is the custom of our board, unless there's a prevailing reason to consider not doing so. We as, we as a board tend to grant those, those requests in the spirit of just, you know, a more complete process and full preparation. So to be courteous to those of you who may be here to speak in connection with one of those applications, rather than have you wait until it comes up, only to learn it's continued, we'd like to get that business out of the way first. And in doing so, we will only have two hearings that will be going forward this evening. And I'll just tell you what those are now. We have 37th Story Avenue, which is McDonald's USA LLC application, as well as the last matter on the docket, which is 12 Horton Street. We, we also will be going forward this evening on 2 Neptune. So without further ado, I'm going to just back up a moment, take our roll call, introduce the board members, and then we'll get right into the business of continuances and then the business of our full hearings. So with that, I will just take a moment here to call the, the role. And as I do, if I could just ask members of the ZBA, if you could just respond by either saying here or, or present as we, as we take, take role and just bear with me a quick second. Okay. So again, opening the zoning board of appeals meeting for the meeting of September 28th, 2021, at being 7:04, we are at the published time, calling role, Mr. Mark Moore.
Here.
Mr. Stephen Delisle. And I don't see Stephen yet. And Mr. Ken Swanton.
Here.
Mr. Walter Bud Shannon.
Here.
Mr. Gregory Bennet.
Yes, present.
Rob Champetti, I'm here. That is six members up. Mr. Delisle. You just finished taking role. You want to call, you can, you can eye yourself in and we'll, we got you as part of our quorum.
I am here.
Mr. Delisle is here. It's, it's almost, I mean, it's interesting. I can see that you guys are here. We almost don't need to take role, but we will for those that don't have video access and are just doing this by phone. So we have six, one, two, three, four, five, six members of the ZBA having responded in the affirmative that are here. We have a full board. I'm just going to point out that our voting members this evening will be myself on all matters except to Neptune Street. Mr. Mark Moore, Mr. Stephen Delisle, Mr. Ken Swanton, Mr. Walter Shannon, and Mr. Bennet will be voting on 2 Neptune Street in my place. So those will be the voting members. We, we've established our roll call. We have a quorum and we will jump into the public hearings. I'll just take a moment and just introduce members of the board for members of the audience that are just, just logging on. Mr. Mark, we have Mr. Mark Moore this evening, our vice chairman, Mr. Stephen Delisle is our ZBA secretary. Mr. Ken Swanton is a ZBA member. Mr. Mr. Bud Shannon is a ZBA member. Mr. Gregory Bennet is our associate member. My name is Rob Champetti. I'm the ZBA chair. And with that, we will jump in to the continuances. We'll start at the top of our, of our batting order, 65 Curzon Mill Road has the app, we've received a request from the applicant to continue the application. There is no applicant present to be heard. So members of the ZBA, we can just act on their written request. Do I have a motion to continue?
And Mr. Chairman, I'll make that motion to continue this matter with the provision that there be no more continuances on this without some sort of furtherance with regard to a plan by the applicant.
Okay. All right. Well, that's, that's the motion that's, that's been made. And we have a motion to continue with a, we'll call it a, a sharp interest by Mr. Delisle, the moving party, to limit the applicant's further request of further continuances without, we'll say, extenuating circumstances. Is that, is that a fair characterization, Mr. Delisle? Or do you wish to just make it no further continuances?
No, no, not no further continuances, no further continuances without some sort of modification to their plan or, or, or further submittal.
Okay. All right. Well, we, and Caitlin or Andy, we're all, we're putting all of these out to October 26th?
I believe the 26th. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct, Chair.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Do we have a second on the motion made by Mr. Delisle to continue Curzon Mill Road to October 26th upon request of the applicant with a, with a sharp eye toward no further continuances without further modifications to the plan?
I'll second it, Ken Swanton.
Thank you, Mr. Swanton. Motion's made by Mr. Delisle and seconded by Mr. Swanton on the motion to continue, Mr. Moore.
I'll be recusing myself from this application, so.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Delisle.
Yes.
Mr. Swanton.
Yes.
Mr. Shannon.
Yes.
Mr. Bennet. Mr. Bennet, you just want to unmute your mic.
Yeah, my vote was no on that.
There we go. We could, we could, we could read your lips. We know you said, you said aye. And Rob Champetti, I vote, I vote yes. That's five in the affirmative. The ayes have it. The motion carries matter on 20, sorry, on 65 Curzon Mill Road is continued to October 26th. And the next matter is the application of Eric Primack on 30 Winter Street. And we have a request from the applicant on 30 Winter Street to continue the matter to October 26th. No applicants present. So I will ask for a motion from members of the ZBA on the applicant's request to continue to the 26th.
I'll make a motion to continue application for 30 Winter Street, 2021-49 to October 26th, 21.
I'll second it, Ken Swanton.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Motion seconded by Mr. Swanton, calling the role on the motion to continue, Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Delisle.
Yes.
Mr. Swanton.
Yes.
Mr. Shannon.
Yes.
Mr. Bennet.
Yes.
And Rob Champetti, I vote yes. That's six in the affirmative. The ayes have it. The motion carries. And 30 Winter Streets continued to the meeting of 1026. The next application, which we have received a request for further continuance is the application of 2224 Olive Street LLC, care of Lisa Mead, Mead Tellerman and Costa LLC. And on this matter, no applicant is anticipated to be present either. We will, we can act on the applicant's written request to continue. Do we have a motion to continue?
I'll make a motion to continue application for 2224 Olive Street, 2021-44 to October 26th.
Second it, Ken Swanton.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Moore's motion, seconded by Mr. Swanton, calling the role, Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Delisle.
Yeah.
Mr. Swanton.
Yes.
Mr. Shannon.
Yes.
Mr. Bennet.
Yes.
And Rob Champetti, I vote yes. That's six in the affirmative. The ayes have it. The motion carries. And 2224 Olive Street is also continued to the meeting of 1026. The last continuance request we have on our docket is the matter of Eve Davis Lee, care of Lisa Mead, Mead Tellerman and Costa LLC for the application of 64 Liberty Street. We also have a request to continue to 1026. No applicant is anticipated to be present. We can act on the applicant's request. Do we have a motion to continue?
We're moved.
Seconded, Ken Swanton.
Thank you, Mr. Swanton. Motion's made by Mr. Moore, seconded by Mr. Swanton, calling the role, Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Delisle.
Yeah.
Mr. Swanton.
Yes.
Mr. Shannon.
Yes.
Mr. Bennet.
Yes.
And Rob Champetti, I vote yes. That is six in the affirmative. The ayes have it. Motion carries. And that matter is also continued to the hearing of 1026, that's 64 Liberty Street. So rewinding back to the top of our public hearing order, I'm going to turn over, this is a matter that is a continuation from the hearing of August 10th, 2021. I am unfortunately not qualified due to previous meetings to vote on this application. So as, as was the case in the previous meeting, I'm going to turn over the chair to our vice chair, Mr. Moore, to, to take up the application of 2 Neptune Street. And with that, Mr. Moore, you, you have the gavel, sir.
Thank you. The virtual gavel again.
The virtual gavel.
Appreciate it. Our first public hearing tonight will be for 2 Neptune Street, Patty Ann Bampus. The application has been continued four times over the summer for various reasons, plan updates, maybe not a, a full board available. But tonight, we are here for the, the latest presentation from the applicant. Made some changes off of our last gathering on the, on this application. And at this point, we should know that this is an application for a special permit for non-conformities to add a dormer on the rear roof of a pre-existing non-conforming structure. And at this time, might we hear from the applicant?
Good evening. My name is Patty Ann Bampus, and tonight is a continuation of my application to build a shed dormer on my home. At the end of the last ZBA meeting in August, a comment was made that this home is exempt from current state building code. So I sent the drawings to Building Commissioner Greg Earls for review. He reviewed historic building code and current state building code and determined that the plans presented in August would not meet code. Although historic code is sometimes applicable to projects and antique homes, Mr. Earls clarified to me that because I am adding living space, I am now subject to current state code. If the space remained the same size, but the fixtures such as the toilet, shower and vanity moved around, then the historic code would be fine. I had been focusing on trying to meet current code both horizontally around the shower and vertically for the ceiling height. But I needed flexibility on the roof line inset as three feet, six inch design would not meet the code, which is why the last drawings were only a two-foot inset. So I want to clarify for the board that these bathroom fixtures are in place. And that was through work permitted through the building department in March of 2020, primarily to get the shower away from the window and relocate the toilet and vanity. This is also not the original design envisioned when the first set of drawings were received in June of 2019, but have been adapted because of beam placement hidden in the plastered walls. And I cannot change the size of the closet or the study because of those original beams extending from the ridge. Now, I'm, I'm not sure if the board wishes the building commissioner to speak before I go on or should I, should I read the email of his determination?
I think it might be helpful for him to maybe present a summary of his, of his findings and decision.
Am I live? This is Greg Earls.
You are. Yep, we can hear you. Go ahead.
I think the applicant did a really good job of summarizing. I'm not going to repeat what I gave you in the memo, but if the applicant did nothing but move fixtures, it would not have to meet current building code. Once the space is configured, it's then called a level two and then would have to meet building code, especially in ceiling height and distances between fixtures. From the drawing that I see, it does, it passes all that with, with the new drawing with the three-six. So there's really, there's, there's not, I have no concern as from the building department point of view in either case. If that makes any sense at all.
Okay, thank you very much for that. If there's any questions, I know you'll be available.
I certainly will.
During questions from the board. So Miss Bampus, you can continue.
Okay. So after my conversation with Mr. Earls, I realized that the only design that could satisfy both the demo delay ordinance and the state building code would be a roof line pitch change by building a small wall on the side yard and then building the shed dormer, which lifts up, I don't know what you call it, that, that slope that's in the bathroom. This new design does not add any new non-conformities to the property and is not more detrimental to the neighborhood. But this is technically not an as-of-right dormer, as I understand it. If we could go to the SG 10 drawing, which I think is the first one, that's, that's number 11, SG 10. So that shows the top row where the existing, well, is the existing cross-section of the house. And then the bottom row shows both the proposed section AA and BB, that there is a little, a little, I guess you would call it a knee wall or a little wall on the side yard, and then the dormer goes up from there. So it really, it really opens it up. There is, as you can see, there is no ceiling for two out of three spaces. So that's why it almost looks like there's a horizontal section in the middle next to the fireplace and window. It almost looks like it's cantilevered. There is a teeny tiny hallway. And then after that, there's no ceiling in the, in the bathroom in the study. That was removed just to make that, they're small spaces, just to make them feel a little bit bigger. So it is currently open to the attic. If we could go on to SG 11, the next drawing. Okay. So this shows, actually, if you could go back to just the SG 11, that shows the new smaller dormer, which is pulled in on each side, the three foot, six inch recommendation. So both sides, so it's a symmetrical dormer, which the last one was not a symmetrical dormer. This would actually satisfy my neighbors concerned at 2.5 Neptune of the distance from the property line because the property, property line is down the very middle of the house. And so 2.5, you know, butts right up to two, as this was a single family at one point in time. It is possible I might need to change the windows to six over six from eight over eight due to the wall height, but that's something that I need to look into if the project is approved. If we could go on to 11.1, the next drawing. So this just shows, this just shows it from my neighbor's side view is what, how it exists right now in existing, and then the proposed left elevation. If we could go on to SG INT, yep, which is that next drawing. So this shows the interior code compliance. On the, the bathroom elevation on the left, under the green shows 24 inches of horizontal code requirement and a person standing. And the blue line, which I think you could see vertically above the person, shows the three foot, six inch inset. So with this new design, I can accomplish the 24-inch safety clearance around the shower. The bathroom elevation on the right, the green box shows the vertical ceiling height requirement for state building code being met. This is a cross-section and also showing no existing ceiling in place, except for over the toilet. These fixtures are all in place. You can't see the shower there because it's just, you know, we're actually like looking through the shower. The bottom shows the bathroom partial floor plan is from above. And it shows the blue line as the dormer wall, three foot, six inch inset. The green box for the horizontal compliance and a black slashed line showing where the six foot, eight inch ceiling height starts to slope down. So if you look at the left top corner of the green box, just to the left of it is that black line. So it shows that within the green box, a six foot, eight ceiling height is, is available. And then even a little bit to the left, it's still available. And then it slopes down to go with what the roof pitch would be. If we could go on to the next slide. So this slide describes why I believe the project is not more detrimental to the neighborhood. Over the course of the last year and talking with neighbors, I have collected 16 letters of support. And 11 of those were in my immediate vicinity. So these are my immediate neighbors who know me, who've known the house for a few years or for many years. And, you know, they, they've been inside, they know what I'm up against. And I've looked over many, many other projects, and this number of letters is actually very high for support for projects that have come up for review. Also, the total square footage is less than 500 square feet. I believe it's approximately 140 square feet that I am looking to gain, which is, is really not a lot. The closest buildings around my house are as tall or taller than this house. And you could probably go to the photographs. That would be fantastic. So that is my house on the left. And to the right is 200 Water Street. That house is slightly built up. The, the foundation is slightly built up. When you're, when you're out at the seawall, you can see that their ridge line is taller than my house. And actually, if you look down the street just slightly to the left, you can see number four and then number six, which have higher ridge lines also to my house. If we could go on to the next one. This is across the street. That's number one Neptune on the corner. And then to the right is number five Neptune, which is three stories. And then to the left of number one Neptune is 208 Water. So another three-story building in my immediate vicinity. So it's not like this house is surrounded by little capes or bungalows. If we could go on to the next slide. This is just another angle to show the height of 200 Water Street on my right. And then in between the houses shows number five Neptune, just for a perspective of that the volume in that area is, I am surrounded by taller homes. If we could go to the next one. And then this is more of a long shot down the street. Really kind of like the next smallest home is this small cape, which has a shed dormer on front and back. That is 194 Water Street, which is right next to 196, again, a larger, much larger structure, and then 200. And then you can see my roof in the distance on the left. And I think that there's one more slide. So this is across the street from me at the boat ramp. This is 209 Water Street. And I'm, I'm actually not sure if it's all owned by one family, but you can see that the two buildings that are right on Water Street are three stories high, both of those buildings. And then the house to the left is two stories. So again, you, you know, I really do believe that these homes that surround me are equal or larger in size. A number of them are equal or larger in size. I don't have pictures for some of the other comments I'm going to make, but what I, I know that massing and volume is a concern for this project. And so I walked the neighborhood and I just wanted to just get people who know the area to think about, you know, one in five Neptune I, I mentioned, but on Madison Street, which is parallel to Neptune Street, number 2, 5, 7 and 9 all have a combination of either double shed dormers, doghouse dormers and roof decks for those properties. Number 18 and 21 have doghouse dormers and gable dormers. And then when I was walking on Water Street, there's just so many to choose from. Number 174 has a roof deck that's cut out of the middle of the roof. And then it has double shed dormers in the back, and that's on the corner of Water and the bike path. 179, 181 Water Street, which is on the water side, they have doghouse and gable dormers on front and back. And then, you know, I mean, the list goes on. 176, 182, 225, 239 and 235 have either a single shed dormer or a combination of doghouse and shed dormers. And 194 and 249-251, which is going down Water Street towards Plum Island, have double shed dormers on front and back or side to side, depending on how you look at them. You can see here, 209 has a triple doghouse dormer on the front and the back. And even the garage has two shed dormers on it that I just happened to notice today. So I, I really truly believe that this list of homes with a variety of expansions, you know, it really just goes like on and on. I mean, I, I could really go on to many other streets. But there's a lot of variety of expansions in my neighborhood. And that's what makes me feel that my smaller size shed dormer project will not be more detrimental to the neighborhood, but will actually fit into the neighborhood more comfortably. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Bampus. With the presentation complete, we will now, okay, excellent. Well, now go to the next portion of the process, which would be public comment from the public, which will be done electronically. And as a reminder, when you click your raised hands, you'll, you'll be recognized. I believe by Caitlin. And then when you're asked to comment, please unmute your mic and state your name and address. I would also ask, given that we've done this a few times, that if, if we do have people that have commented in the past, if it's substantially different, of course, there'll be no time clock put to this, but I'd like to try to keep this succinct. Because again, this is, and several times we've been through this. So I just ask a favor of, of the public and their comments. If you could get really succinct tonight, that would be appreciated. So with that, we will recognize our first comment.
The first person we have is Thomas Calderjohn.
Go ahead, Mr. Calder.
Hello, can you hear me?
Sure can.
Thank you. Tom Calderjohn, 64 Federal Street, co-president of the Thank you. Tom Calderjohn, 64 Federal Street, co-president of the Newburyport Preservation Trust. I will be brief. The trust continues to oppose this proposal in the strongest terms possible. A shed dormer would dramatically alter the streetscape and the structure and would not be appropriate. It would be a shame to lose the unique shape of the historic saltbox outline, roof line. It will negatively impact the attached other portion of the house. There's a clear reason why the Newburyport Historical Commission imposed the delay in the first place. They determined that it was out of character with this wonderful historic first period house. The owner wants it, but does does not mean it fits with the neighborhood. It is detrimental to the neighborhood. It is out of proportion and sits on top of the roof like a sore thumb. This upward extension only makes the house worse. It is not an improvement. This is a unique and iconic historic house in a highly visible location. Please deny this application. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Calderjohn, and thank you for the succinct comments.
Next person we have is Glenn Richards.
Go right ahead, Mr. Richards.
Yeah. Good evening. Glenn Richards, 6 Kent Street. And you know, I'm on the historical commission, but I'm speaking just for myself. There is no, it's, you know, it's not a D-Cod situation, that sort of thing. So I'll be very brief, just two quick points. First, I'm glad that both the applicant and Mr. Earls, the commissioner, clarified that the the need to change is driving the need for code compliance and not the other way around. There was some dispute about that, so I'm glad that's been straightened out. And Mr. Calderjohn, my previous speaker has well explained, you know, why the historical commission voted a little over a year ago, you know, against this unanimously, I might add, six to zero. So the only comment I want to make is about the role of the ZBA here. Normally, I know you folks were very hard in in interpreting the zoning regulations, things like setbacks, roof heights, you know, and that sort of thing. And and I don't disagree with the applicant that if this was an ordinary house without its unique historical context, there's no question that, you know, this would not be a particularly controversial addition, particularly since she has reduced, if I understand the plans correctly, reduced it to a so-called by right dormer, so it's smaller. I think the only real question is, you know, the the historical context of that particular structure. So I would just say that, kind of remind the the ZBA that although you normally deal with issues of the zoning interpretation of zoning ordinances such as I mentioned, I believe you do have a role as on behalf of the city to help support the historical, Newburyport's historical architecture. It's architectural heritage, it's cultural heritage. And I think that the fact that the ZBA is the special permit granting authority in in D-Cod matters. And again, I know this is not one of those, but I think it's that significant in that it points to the fact that the council, and I think by extension, the city sees that the ZBA, you know, does have a role in protecting the historical heritage of Newburyport, which by extension is really in Kate, in a house this old, is really the historical heritage of the city. So you've got a difficult decision in front of you. I don't envy you that, so good luck with that. But I did want to just, you know, point out that I think that if you understand the historical context and why in that particular context, the even a quote by right dormer may be inappropriate, then, you know, I think that you're certainly within your rights to to vote that way. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Richards. Caitlin, who's next?
I'm not seeing any further hands at this time. Oh, we do have one phone caller ending in 407. And they've been unmuted.
And call you may need to press star six to unmute yourself when you're in.
Hello, am I coming in loud and clear?
Yes.
Yes, you are.
Great. This is Reg Bacon at 21 Strong Street in Newburyport. I have followed this hearing closely for several months. And as a history and preservation professional, I have followed this house on the preservation radar for quite a few years. I'm speaking against the special permit at two Neptune Street. But I speak with some resignation, realizing that I may be here only to pay respects at the burial of one of our city's few remaining examples of first period architecture. Even a smaller dormer at the permitted size merely adds to the ill-considered compromises already perpetrated. But the board must still make a determination on the quote, more or less detrimental, unquote, question. In my view, the plan remains more detrimental to the neighborhood and beyond. So I urge the board to deny this application. I ask each individual to consider what your vote says about the city's singular ambiance in its 750 acre National Register Historic District. Does it say it doesn't matter? Does it say that if an applicant strings the board along for months, eventually it will cave? I'm hoping that we can put an end to the incessant game playing with the zoning board and by extension, the bullying of our citizens. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bacon. Is there anyone else that wishes to be heard?
Yes. Next, we have Tam Schwartz.
Go right ahead.
Hi, can you hear me?
Sure can.
Great. Okay, so my name is Tam Schwartz. My husband and I live at 178 Water Street. We've been residents of Newburyport for about eight years. And when my husband and I first moved to Newburyport, the home on two Neptune was quite frankly an eyesore. It was a scar on our neighborhood. And this was well before the property went up for sale. This property sat for months before it sold. Plenty of time for the town or the state or the historic commission or the preservation trust or individuals so concerned about it to take action. It took someone outside of Newburyport to have a vision of what that property could be with some blood sweat. And unfortunately, thanks to a handful of Newburyport citizens' tears. My husband and I have sat now on three or four of these meetings regarding this project. It is abhorrent to us that a very small minority of this community, less than one tenth of one percent, and that's being generous, seem to feel a moral obligation to leverage this pulpit to bully homeowners and this board into adhering to what they believe is right. I question if any of the dissenters actually live in our neighborhood. And I doubt, as I do know a few, they ever venture into our neck of the woods. I, my husband, and other neighbors are grateful to this homeowner for having the foresight and fortitude to take on what was a dilapidated structure and to beautify our neighborhood. My husband and I have taken it upon ourselves to get to know this homeowner. Her motives are humble and genuine. I visited the bathroom, garnering so much attention. I'm five foot six and I could take barely three steps before I had to duck my head. I ask all those challenging this request to measure not the square foot of your average full bath, but the cubic feet, and then ask yourself if you still feel this homeowner is asking too much. This is the 21st century. Everyone in this city has the right to live comfortably in their home and by today's standard. We need to keep our eye on today and the future and not allow ourselves to push our residents to live in the conditions of the past. The Schwartz's fully support and endorse this request and request that you approve this ask. Thank you.
Thank you. Caitlin, is there anyone else?
Not seeing any new hands at this time.
All right, going once, going twice. Ms. Schwartz, I see you still have your hand up. You just wanted to click that one off. That would be great. And we will close public comment. At this point, we now move on to questions from the board and we'll start with Mr. Delisle.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. A question, Ms. Bampus, that caught my ear as we heard your presentation relates to the slope of the dormer. Is that that's different now? Can you explain that?
Yes, I I guess the original or the current dormer slope is a 10 pitch. And the structural engineer told me that it is now either an eight or a nine pitch.
Okay, can you tell me what that means in regular English?
It's 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 not as steep of a slope as, well, the proposed plans would not be as steep as it currently is.
So if you make the roof less steep, it it gets more towards a a straight line, right, to a 180 degree line as opposed to some sort of angle. And if you make that closer to a 180 degree line, then you're, the face of the dormer will now be larger. Is that right? Be more surface area of the face of the dormer.
Of the face of the dormer.
Face of the dormer that you would look down if you were driving east on Water Street. You would see your, the the face of the dormer as you come east on Water Street.
You mean the dormer that has the windows, side that has the windows on it?
The proposed dormer that we've been speaking of for some time now.
I believe the face is maintained. I can't see the drawing. It it's, the print is a little small for my eyes. I asked the engineer to keep the size of the dormer, the actual dormer, the same. Whoops.
Well, I think if you if you make the angle less steep, you have to make the one of the legs of that triangle gets longer, right? So I think it's, I think that the face of the dormer would be larger.
I don't believe so, but that's a question that I I do not have the numbers for.
Okay. I don't have any other questions. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Delisle. Mr. Swanton.
Yeah, I I I think I want to try to get at what Mr. Delisle was just getting at, which if you take this picture that's if you go to the previous slide, if you could turn to the previous slide, please. Because it was mentioned that there was a small knee wall or something was being added. If you if you zoom in on the current side view here, like the one in the top middle. Could you do that? You can see the size of the wall there. You you got to go closer to be able to read this thing. It's so small. It's funny. I don't know why it's not showing on this one. I I I can see it on the one that was in, that was sent to us, that 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 wall where it says workshop is seven and a half feet tall today. And what's happening, if you go to the picture right below, that wall is being increased, that sidewall is growing. See that little extension above? The workshop is now called dining and the little wall goes up there. So essentially, the entire back wall of the house is being raised by two and a half feet with a little knee wall. And and I I think Mr. Delisle was on to something here. The entire roof is actually being elevated by that two and a half feet, and then the dormer is being put within it. That's what I see in these drawings.
Yes.
Is that what's happening?
Yes.
So you're not just here to ask for a dormer in the middle of your roof. You're asking to raise the entire roof by two and a half feet in the back and then put the dormer on it. Is is that what you're doing?
Yes, I actually thought I explained that in the beginning, that in the only way that I saw to accomplish the height requirements inside the bathroom were to change the roof line pitch. So that that slope. So yes, I had to bring up that wall by two and a half feet and then put the dormer on as proposed. And by by doing that, then I accomplish, I I'm able to do the three foot six inches and not have that conflict with building code.
Right, I I get why you're doing it. I just wanted to point out what I think Mr. Delisle was driving at is that the whole pitch of the whole roof is now increased because you're basically extending the whole back wall up. So I just want to make sure we understand what the plan is in front of us. So I'm glad you confirmed that.
Yes.
I had another question, which is you mentioned that the neighbor at two and a half Neptune Streets concerned has been satisfied. Is is two and a half Neptune the person you're sharing this building with? Is I I I I'm sorry, I don't, where's two and a half Neptune? Is that your neighbor who you're?
Two and a half is the the other side of the house.
Okay.
They're the side that has the driveway.
Okay, so that's, you're like a, I won't say a two family house, but in a lot of towns, it would be a two family house, you on one side and they're on the other.
Yes.
They have spoken out rather strenuously against this proposal. Are they now in support of this proposal?
I have no idea.
Okay.
I know that one of their concerns was the three foot six inches from the edge that they were, they asked in, I believe, a letter in August to the ZBA that that be maintained. And so this accomplishes that request.
In in some ways, but in others, you're increasing the entire roof beside them. I don't know. I mean, I I applaud you for getting a lot of support for your brothers in the neighborhood. What's challenging for us is I can't recall a two family house where the other side of the house is is very much against the proposal. So that's that's the pickle we're in here. You you may have other neighbors who say, let's do this. But when the person you're sharing the house with is, you know, written and on record being opposed, it it makes it challenging for us.
If I could add that I believe that you know that the neighbors on the other side don't live here. And they have not attended, I believe, the last two meetings. I'm not 100% sure if it's the last two or three. I think that they only attended the first meeting. So they 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 come on vacation. They come for a weekend or, you know, during COVID, a week or two. And then and then they go back to New York or Watertown. But to me, and and they were actually having plans of their own to have a dormer out of their attic because they asked me for referrals. So I don't know where that stands for them, but they they have not expressed recently that they're for or against it.
I I don't have any other, I just want to say one other thing, which is, you know, we have a certain set of things we have to decide upon here as a board. And we cannot, I know many people listening would like us to consider the historic value. That's not in the regulations for us to consider. We need to look at the the structures in the neighborhood and whether this thing fits in. I know you have, as an applicant, said we need to think about the building codes and whatnot. That's another thing. We did, it's not within our charter to really consider. I understand that's something you're challenged with. And and I I know you've pointed out other neighbors that have very high houses. But just because somebody else has a high house doesn't mean everybody else in the neighborhood can have a house that's as high. Or else it'd be, you know, why have zoning if 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 there's one house in the neighborhood and everybody can just be as high? I mean, that's, this is difficult because there's so many extraneous issues and we've had, this is now six meetings on this one building. And we keep bringing up things like his history or building codes that are really not things that that I I understand why they're brought up, but they're not things that are part of our decision process. I just want to say that. And I yield my time to the next person. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Swan. Mr. Tragman.
Thank you, Vice Chair. I guess just to maybe wrap up some of the discussion and the presentation, the the dormer as it's presented today now meets building code and is now what we were calling a dormer by right. It's three and a three and a half feet from each side. Can the applicant just confirm that?
Yes, yes.
Thank you. I have no other questions.
Thank you, Mr. Tragman. Mr. Bennett?
I have a few. In my view, you know, we do have a an opinion from the historic commission. And in my view, I believe that the zoning board can consider that opinion as it renders its own decision based upon consider that opinion as it renders its own decision based upon the zoning ordinance. But I, I believe our decision can be informed one way or the other uh, with respect to that advisory opinion or opinion of the Historic Commission. So I don't view it binding in any way on the zoning board, but I do take it into account and I do, uh, give it a fair weight as I try to assess a project of this nature, which is, uh, obviously controversial and obviously there is a uh, sector of the community, uh, that, that, that views this project with some significance. So that being said, uh, my questions go to the history of this structure. And it's, and I, 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 I hope, uh, Ms. Bampus, you can help me here. It's, it seems to me, I, well, tell me if I'm correct, this structure was a unitary structure uh, when it was constructed. By that, I mean the structure where you live and also your neighbor. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so that was back, I take the Historic Commission's report. It's back in the late seventeen hundreds, perhaps even earlier. I don't know if the data is relevant. So from that point on, it's, I, I took a hard look at this unitary structure uh, to see to what extent it has been changed over the course of the last two hundred years. So here's what I observe and I'd like you to help me to see if I'm correct. First off, there is a deck on the back of this structure, which clearly was not present back when it was initially constructed. Am I correct?
Um, I believe it was constructed in the nineteen eighties.
Okay. Uh, you, there is a door which goes out to the, I'll, I'll call it your yard. A full length door. When was that door constructed, if you know?
On, on my side or on the driveway side?
Uh, uh, I'm gonna try, uh, well, it, it appears to, 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 uh, uh, provide entrance to your yard.
Okay, so that's a, yep, that's a back door and there always was a door there.
Okay.
It was just, it was a solid door.
Okay, it was a solid door and now it is a door with, describe it for me, please.
Um, a fifteen light French door with a, a full light storm door.
Okay, so it is not faithful to the history of this structure?
No.
Okay. Now I'd like you to talk about the windows a bit. And can you tell me whether those windows are faithful to the historic nature of the structure?
Uh, no, though the windows originally, when I saw the property in two thousand, let's see, two thousand eighteen were six over six. Uh, some, the windows on the Water Street side were vinyl windows. The windows on the Neptune Street side were wooden windows. And the kitchen window was a single leaded glass multi-pane window.
Okay.
The variety of materials.
Thank you. I note there is a window facing Water Street, kind of, there's a large window. I'm looking at a photo that you provided. And there are two little windows on either side of that large window at the top of the structure. Do you see that?
That's in the attic, yes.
Okay, in the attic. Was, was that, is that original to this structure?
No. That, well, there was one window in the attic.
All right.
And then I added the two other windows.
Okay, now, can you comment, if you will, if you know, uh, to what extent the windows have been changed in your neighbor's house? Or are they faithful to the historic nature of this structure?
Uh, I don't know. I believe those windows you're talking about two Neptune, I mean, two point five Neptune. I believe they are six over six windows, but I'm not sure if they are vinyl or wood.
Do we know what they were originally?
I'm guessing wood.
No, no, were they six over six or eight over eight?
Oh, I don't know.
Okay, thank you. Uh, and I take it the solar panels weren't there at the conception of the construction of this building?
Uh, no.
Okay, are there any exterior changes to this structure that you can tell me uh, relative to its original construction back when it was originally constructed?
Not sure I understand the question.
What else has been changed to that building on the, the exterior from the time it's been constructed, aside from the things we've identified so far?
Uh, I did remove a chimney that was an exhaust for the furnace. You can see there's a white pipe and then right below it, there's a, a square of white where, where the old chimney was. I was trying to gain space in the kitchen and on the second floor. And unfortunately I gained space, but then I had to re-support the beams on the first floor. But that chimney was removed, but the furnace, I don't know the date the furnace was installed. I'm gonna guess in the last seventy-five years.
Thank you. How about the shed? Was this, when was the shed constructed and added on to this property?
That I do not know.
To your knowledge, was it there in the eighteenth century?
I, I, I.
Okay, if you don't, don't speculate. It's, it's fine. I'm just trying to, I'm trying to get a clear sense of the historic nature of the structure and to what extent it has been changed over time. I appreciate your responses. I have no other questions.
Thank you, Mr. Bennet. Um, I think, uh, my colleagues have thoroughly covered, uh, any questions, so I have no further questions. So we will close. Questions from the board.
Mr. Moore.
Yes, sir.
In with one further question?
Go right ahead.
Okay, um, and this is, uh, Mr. Mr. Bennet's taking us through sort of all the things that have been done to this house, sort of, uh, 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 set off a light bulb in my, in my mind regarding the, um, the pla- the, the plans, I guess, as they've been altered, uh, in this last go-round. I'm, I'm wondering, and I, I guess this really isn't a question for the applicant, but maybe for, um, Jennifer or Andy. Um, is the repitching of the entire roof such a dramatic change to the plan that it would in itself constitute a roofline change, which would throw the whole thing back to historical?
Sorry, I'm not sure I understand the, the question.
Uh, yeah, Andy, Andy, I think what we heard is that the whole roof is gonna be changed. It's going to be, uh, repitched entirely. So my question is, does, uh, because before we were here on this plan, it was for a dormer to be put on and an upward extension on the rear and front, um, sidelines. But now it seems that we have a whole repitching of the roof. Um, so I'm wondering if that's something that's so dramatically different in its nature that it's not what was proposed to the Historical Commission last year. It's something entirely different and needs to be re-proposed.
Uh, this is Jennifer Blancher. I, I can speak to that. Um, and my answer is twofold. One will speak directly to the relief required from the Historic Commission. And yes, you are correct that that would be an entire roofline change. However, the Historic Commission has already imposed the delay and that delay is still valid and will be valid from six months from the one-year expiration. For, um, that is one, one part of the answer. The second part is that, yes, this additional knee wall and small triangle of additional building face is a bit of a different proposal than perhaps some of you and even myself understood. However, the relief required is identical in that it is still considered an upward extension of a non-conforming front and rear yard setback. The dormer itself was that and the upward extension of this sidewall would be the same relief required and so therefore can be viewed through the same hearing process.
Yeah, this is Andy. I would agree with what Jennifer said. I think in particular, the key question, which is that the demolition delay, um, was imposed and there's the period of time, uh, relative to the prior, uh, application of that demolition delay for the applicant to take action. Um, uh, they're not relieved of that, um, uh, option at this point, I guess, if, if you will.
I'm sorry, Andy, can you, can you explain that more? What, they're not, she's not relieved of the demolition delay despite the fact that the year has passed?
Well, the, the year has passed, but there's a window of opportunity to act on that. The, the change of the planet, your question seemed to be that if the design change itself was sufficient to send it back to the board, um, I'm not sure that's how the ordinance operates. The ordinance, uh, speaks to whether there's a demolition delay um, a, a imposed, uh, and then there's the ability to release the demolition delay based on specific plans. It might be, uh, approvable within that period. Um, but upon the expiration of the demolition delay, there's a, a period, um, where one can act and I, I think that's where we are right now. I don't know if Jennifer wants to add anything to that.
No, that, that's exactly right. They, they imposed the delay. The twelve-month period has expired and we are still within that six-month period, as Andy just said, where they can act uh, to make a demolition. That does not give them the right to make any sort of reconstruction and that is where your board, the zoning board comes in, in reviewing any sort of new construction that would be built in a non-conforming manner on this property.
Okay, thank you, Jennifer. So, and then, so what would, what would now be, what the relief we would now be granting would be for not just the upward extension for the dormer, correct, but, uh, but a great, like, but a, a greater upward extension to now lift the entire back of the house by two and a half feet. Is that right?
Uh, the rear of the house, it, it, of course, a portion of it is conform, and I, I'm stumbling here a bit because the rear of the house is not, from a setback standpoint, the rear yard setback. But the, the side facing Water Street, the side of the house facing Water Street would be, would constitute an upward extension. Uh, however, this project is already before you for an upward extension of that setback, whether it's of the dormer or of the face of wall. If you feel that it's, it's so much of a change that you weren't prepared to, you know, in, in your understanding of it tonight, uh, and you need to, to pause to review that, uh, that would be understandable because it is a bit different than, uh, perhaps was fully understood at the beginning of this hearing.
Yeah, and Jennifer, though, the, uh, technical point being that the relief needed hasn't changed, right?
Absolutely, absolutely. The, it is still an upward extension of the front yard setback, whether it is the building face or the dormer face. And it is the same at the rear yard setback, uh, where it is an upward extension regardless of whether it's of the dormer or the primary building face.
Correct. So, okay, just to, just to really drill down on this. So the rear, the rear setback is the side that is, uh, that is adjacent to two point five Water Street. And that would have, there would be an upward extension is requested on that rear setback because the dormer will extend upwards. Uh, the proposed dormer will extend upwards there. The front setback is the side that faces Water Street. Uh, and there is a request there for an upward extension on the, the front setback because the dormer will extend, uh, up from that sidewall. There's now also, or there, with respect to the dormer on that perpendicular side to Water Street, which I guess would be called the, um, uh, the side setback. Uh, that is now, there's an upward extension for the dormer and now also for the entire wall of two Water Street as well. Is that correct? Do I have that right?
I would like to defer to the applicant on this one because if I too am asking that question because will, is the party wall that divides two Neptune from two and a half Neptune, is that wall extending up the some portion and will, will there be sort of a scissor in the roofline? And I, I do, I would ask that of the applicant because I certainly have not done these drawings.
So I, I, I feel like I almost need that reworded. Are you asking, is the three and a half foot setback on the rear going to impact the adjacent wall between the two houses?
Yeah, I think it's that bottom rate graphic. Is that the one to show, I think, Jennifer?
No, I would, I would actually want to look at the view from your, from two and a half Neptune, looking back at your structure. And
I think that's SG eleven point one. So you can see the outside of the scope. That's, that shaded, solid shaded block is two point five. And then the horizontal clapboard siding is number two. Uh, it's, the deck is not shown for the, just the purpose of the drawing?
Okay. So we can see in this image, um, if you look at the existing, that there's a very small sliver of roofline that continues above your neighbor's home. And in your proposal below, that that pie-shaped wedge is larger because of the two and a half foot knee wall that you are adding on the western face of the home.
Yes.
And so therefore to the question that the board is currently asking, yes, this is, you are, you are adding vertical face to three sides of the primary wall as well as adding an upward extension of the dormer. And therefore the scope of the upward extension is larger than that just of a dormer.
We have that confirmed. I would, I would agree with that assessment. Um, Ms. Bampus, would you agree with that?
Yes, um, those two, the, the two three and a half foot inset on both sides. So both of those walls would come up. Yes. I'm just looking at the drawing. Or they, they get fatter, the, the wedge gets bigger.
But would it, and I was, I'll, I'll, I'll jump on this one too. So is it safe to say that the, so you have the inset dormer three and a half from each side and back from, you know, the edge of the wall as, as needed. So all that would be conforming. However, the roof on either side of the dormer now is pitched differently. So basically the whole, the, the roof on either side of that dormer is radically different.
Well, it's not radically different. I think it changed from a ten pitch, the original, the upper drawing is a ten pitch. And I can get more clarity from the engineer. They said it was either an eight or a nine pitch.
So that's the pitch that changed, not the dormer pitch?
Right. That is the pitch that changed. So it's not, it's not all of the roof that changed. It's just the, the strips with the exposed roofline on either side of the dormer changed.
Anyone else, Mr. Delisle?
Yeah, I, I think, uh, Mr. Moore, just, I, I think also that the, the roof, the, the pitch on the, the dormer changed too, just to, uh, to, 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 um, clarify what, what you just stated. I think that the warmer dormer pitch also changes. Um, but that's just a, a detail, I think, at this point.
You know, I guess when I was, um, redoing these plans to try to comply with everything, I, I don't think I realized the sides. I was more focused on, you know, looking at, looking at the window side, uh, which is the side setback and how it looked from the front, which is Water Street. Um, I guess I really wasn't looking at that increased wall.
Understood. Does anyone else have any, uh, questions? Any further questions before we move to deliberation?
Yeah, I have a question.
Go right ahead.
I'm looking at the plans and I'm looking at that. I guess that is, uh, SG eleven point one. I guess that is SG 11.1. So I I take the pointer and it's a good catch by Mr. Lyle and others. I what I'm trying to figure out to me is. There's a dimension here demonstrated from the top of the dormer. Do you see that? To I'll call it the the peak of the roof, which would appear to be nine feet, two inches. You see that, Ms. Pampas?
I'm actually not sure. Where? Are you looking left or right?
I'm looking at. The pros, you know, the is identified as sheet number SG 11.1. Proposed left elevation, you know, we're looking. From the back there. And on the left hand side, there are a number of dimensions set forth.
Okay, if it's possible to zoom that up, that would be great for my bad eyes.
Yeah, I can see it here. It's on my own little device, so.
Is is the nine feet the distance between? The edge and the dormer height, that kind of like middle chunk?
No, the top of the dormer. I should say this, the bottom point of the dormer. And the top of the roof.
Okay.
So not it says 9.2 feet. I'm just. I'm just trying to get a sense of follow up, Mr. Lyle's point here. I mean, how? Much? Higher? Is the entirety of this project, including the increase in the roof there and the dormer from the existing?
The dormer is not taller than any of the last drawings.
Okay. But the roof, as we've confirmed, is somewhat higher, and I guess I heard. How much that it's in the area of two feet. Is that correct?
2.5.
Okay, all right. I just want to be crisp about the. About what we're talking about. Thanks.
Okay, anyone else with any further questions before we move to deliberations? Hearing no one wishing to ask questions because I move on to deliberations, once again, starting with Mr. Delisle.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. As far as deliberations go here this evening. I continue as I have been. From the beginning. Unable to approve this project and I remain. In that posture. I I think that, you know, we have some some big questions that have arisen through the hearing tonight, and I I don't think that, you know, it would be. Well, certainly for me, it wouldn't be the right, the right, I wouldn't think we should be taking any vote on this tonight based on the the questions that still remain here with. With respect to the the changes to the plans, and I feel as though this is yet another meeting where we've had a little bit of. A surprise with the plans and that seems to be the the case here as we as we peel back the onion on on this project. And I don't think that as we peel the onion back, it gets any better for me. So I I don't know if we really need to get into all the particulars of of this. I'll, you know, I'll, I think I'll, I'll defer to my colleagues for right now, and if there if we need to get into all the particulars. I'll, I'll raise my hand again and speak up.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Delisle, Mr. Shagnan. I'm sorry, well, I went out of, I went out of turn, but I'm going to stick with you, Mr. Shagnan.
Yeah, all right, thank you. I guess in going back to the previous meetings, I was okay with the dormer. Because I thought it was close enough to the by rights size. And I I think it it's still not now that it's shrunken, if you will, three and a half to the three and a half foot dimension, it is. What we were calling a by right dormer. It did, it does concern me a little bit that the the roof has changed, the main roof, if you will. But I guess I would also said that think that it's 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 minor and change. I went back and looked at the June drawings and the. The original dormer was a 12 over six and a half pitch, and now it's a 12 over five. So Mr. Delisle's right, the pitch has changed slightly. It does mean that the dormer is just a little bit taller. But but again, I think it's 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 small. So I I can still support this project, although it's different. It's not what we saw before. It's better in some respects and and not better in others, but but I can support it as submitted. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shagnan, Mr. Swan.
Oh, yeah, um. Mr. Shagnan just used a word that we all used for the last couple of hearings on this, a by right dormer, and. I was surprised in the staff report that we got on Friday when we learned that. You read between the lines there and perhaps Jennifer, she's still there, can chime in, but. By right dormers refer to the historic commission, not us. There's really nothing in the zoning about what's by right, not by right, when it comes to the zoning board of appeals. And I was where Mr. Shagnan was the last time saying, yeah, by right, I get it. No, I guess. We we had a bad interpretation and I just think before we use that word longer. I just think we need to be clear on that and I don't. I know we're during deliberations here, but I think it would be worth. A moment for Jennifer to chime in and just clarify this if if that wouldn't be out of order, Mr. Chair.
I think I would allow that. I think the clarification is important enough.
Hi, this is Jennifer. That is correct, that any reference to. By right, we have suggested that that terms, we we cease using that term and we look to the ordinance and we start thinking about the word exempt. Because under demo delay, there is something called an exempt dormer. And that is the one that is set in three foot six from the sides and one foot six from the bottom. That would mean that it would be exempt from demo delay. Now, because what we're talking about here with the ZBA is an upward extension of a nonconforming setback. There is no such thing as something that would be by right. If that dormer is setback three foot six and it is still within the setback. It is an upward extension and therefore we should not use the word by right.
Thank you. I mean, that was a revelation to me, and I I think that's something that will help us going forward. So anyway, back to my comments on the deliberation here. What we're looking at is an upward extension that's very close to a major thoroughfare. You know, this house happens to sit on a corner, so it's kind of got two front yards and one of, you know, there it's extremely close to the street on both sides. And Water Street is a very busy street, and so we're talking about. An upward extension here, not just with the dormer as as our zoning officer just indicated, but also now the entire side of the house is going up as well. And I'm sitting here trying to remember when the last time we approved. An upward extension of a building. That was within five feet of a street. I can't think of one. I mean, it's not like we're picking on this applicant here. This is not something we see. People don't come in and ask, hey, I want to go up on my street side. It's it's this is very rare. The other thing that's hard for me here is I can't remember the last time we've approved something where it's essentially a two family house and this. And the person on the other side has sent us a letter saying, please don't approve this. So, you know, for both those reasons, I, you know, I look at the massing here, I look at the. You know, does does an upward extension so close to a major street make sense? And I just can't support this, and I don't appreciate the fact that we had to find. This two and a half feet rise to the, I mean, if Mr. Delisle hadn't have spotted it, we probably would have found it. And and it's that's disconcerting to find out what happened there. So I I don't know, I can't support this. I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Swan and Mr. Bennet.
I I guess the question comes down in my view to. We have no by right. Dormer situation here, so we have to apply our. Criteria that we typically do. Informed by neighborhood comments and in this case, the historic commission. And. You know, I I, you know, these plans were in front of us and they didn't drop on our plate this evening. It's our fault if we didn't identify that. So I don't. You know, they were there and had we studied them earlier, we would know that. So, you know, they were there. There was no secrets here. I don't blame the applicant for trying to pull the wool over our eyes because you didn't. They're there and they've been there for quite a while. Zoning officers had those, they could have pointed them out, so. That's neither here nor there to me. Secondly, we identified that issue. Correctly and properly and drilled down pretty deeply on it. So. There's the answer. We do that. Week after week. So, you know, we know clearly what's in front of us, so. The question now becomes, you know, how do we apply the criteria informed by whatever factors should be guiding us? And. This is a close one. I. You know, I have walked that neighborhood. There are equally large buildings on corners on Water Street. So it's hard for me to conclude that the mass or scale of this addition. Is. Not is inconsistent or detrimental to the neighborhood. It's very difficult to to make a. Well thought out. Fact driven finding in that regard. It's just not possible in my view. Given the eclectic nature of the homes in that area, their size and their eclectic character. It's. To me. I can't make that finding and that's the finding that that I'm bound to make if I'm going to reject that. However, that doesn't, I guess, end the analysis for me. There are significant objectors, including. As Mr. Shagnan pointed out. The next door neighbor. And I take his objections seriously, but with a grain of salt, since he, you know. Took this old ancient historic. Historic building and tacked on a deck to it for his. Personal use, which in my view is equally as. Detrimental to the historic character of this building as this dormer. One could disagree, but you know, in for a penny in for a dollar. So, you know, this building has been changed dramatically over the years. It bears little of the of the true character of how it was. And if I were to view it as something that should be preserved in its current state. Because in its current state is it is nothing but a mishmash of 200 years of improvements and changes. So I. I, as much as I respect the historic commission's decision and and weigh it in my deliberations carefully and thoughtfully. It doesn't carry the day. Additionally, this applicant has put on the record a number of other salt box homes in the city of Newburyport. So this is not. At least based upon the record, and I've confirmed that by going over and reviewing some of the homes that were identified in the earlier earlier application. It's just not the case. There are any number of others that have been pointed out and are on the record. So I'm not persuaded. That this structure. Deserves. A negative decision simply because of its historic nature, which brings me back, I think, to the most difficult one in my view. Which is what do the neighborhoods think about? What do the neighbors think about this? What does the community think about this? Well. You know, there there are a host of supporting letters in this file. Of neighbors who support this and have spoken. Strongly in favor of this and and strongly supportive of the applicant's. Historic. Efforts to maintain what would appear to have been a structure that was dilapidated and. Yeah, probably on the verge of destruction now. So all of those. Are are my factors in consideration. So. All that taken into account, I can support this. I think all things being equal, it it meets the criteria. It is not more detrimental to the community. I understand the height issue. I clearly understand the historic issue. But in balancing those factors. I. Exercised my discretion and I would support it.
Thank you, Mr. Bennet, and thank you for that. Always thoughtful. Well structured response and deliberation. And. I I I too am more in the supportive. I do, I can support this for the reasons that you just elucidated. I think it was, it was well said. I do share the concerns of my colleague, Mr. Delisle. And and. And Mr. Swan on on the change, on the neighbors, the immediate neighbor. Share the buildings of of his concern, but. It it the historical nature, as you pointed out in in your questions, Mr. Bennet, has really been. Altered over the years dramatically and really the only thing that I think that we're that we can focus on would be the roof. Well. You know, the roof, if a dormer was going to be put on, it was, you know, an exempt dormer. Was going to change and I again, I agree with your argument today. It's. It's not more detrimental when you look at the neighborhood with respect to size and scale and massing, and that's what we're here to do. While listening to the concerns of any input of the historical commission, but. It has, the house has gone through the process. I am persuaded by, I am influenced a little to hear that. It took many years for this house to be purchased and many improvements. And this is probably the last one. That can be done. So that said, even with my support. An application needs four in the affirmative. And just through deliberations, it certainly appears that there won't be four. So before we go to formal vote, I I mean. I don't know how many times we can do this, so that's the I. I guess I want to ask the board. Would it be appropriate if there was, if we did ask for continuance to ask for an architect? To be on board to better explain some of the concerns with the roofline changes or anything? Is there anyone? That needs more information? To go to a vote now than we have right now? I guess that's the question. Do we just keep, let's continue this so many times? Is it that we need further information from an architect? Do we need further information from? The applicant with with respect to some other. Measurements here? So taking that as a no, the board feels that has all the information it needs to to move forward on a vote on this.
Mr. Moore, I think I think I should take this opportunity to sort of circle back and. Elaborate on on my my sort of perfunctory comments that I made in in the beginning, just getting to the substance of of this matter as to, you know, what sort of. Has informed my my view on this. And I I think, you know, as far as the factors that I'm thinking about. Certainly, the the. Advisory opinion from the historical commission is an important factor for me. I note that sort of the Ms. Pampas. It seems to be well well liked in her neighborhood and certainly has a number of many comments in favor of her her proposal. However, I think that, you know, it to to a large degree, those comments. Really get to the fact that that people. Like the project and like Ms. Pampas, and that's and that's great. I I don't know that. Those comments really get to the substance of what we're what we're considering relative to whether it's substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood or not. I don't, I don't know that those comments really get there. You know, the the critical piece is the opposition from from the the shared wall neighbor. I think that that is that is important. The the. Comments in favor of of things are sort of icing on the cake, but the comments against, I think we have to really consider those. Those very carefully. Those very carefully. And, you know, the, the neighbor, the, the comment from the neighbor's letter at the end of the neighbor's letter. He asks the board. To treat the property line that divides two and 2.5 Neptune Street. As a true property line and uphold any and all zoning requirements and protections. M dash, including the three foot, six inch setback requirement from our property line. So I think that there was more to. That neighbor's misgivings than simply the three foot, six inch setback. And I, I have to weigh that. Importantly is that, you know, that is the only true butter here in this instance. The shared wall of butter. And then we, we have the, the high visibility location that, you know, a number of members of the, of this board have. Have alluded to. And I think that, you know, in the presentation, Caitlin, if you could click on to slide 12. I think that that slide sort of really. Informs, you know, the importance of. Of of this, the visibility here is you're going down Water Street. The fourth, the fourth roof down is, is where the, the dormer will be. So that's, as you're traveling down Water Street, that's a very high visibility location. And. As we look at our, our, our ordinance. Nine A or excuse me, nine B, two A, two A. Says that we, we need to look at the existing structure and the lot and compare that to what the proposal is. So if we, if we think about the existing structure. And how that looks as you are driving down the street and think about the dormer as you are driving down the street. I, I do think that there, there is a detriment here, and I think it is substantial relative to. The high visibility location. And any other location where it's a backyard facing another. Residents backyard, I, I don't think it's a, it's a close call, but here because of the location, that's a, an important factor. For me, and in that we have now. An additional upward extension of the entire back, backside of the house. That, that's an important factor for me. So, you know, that's just a little bit of, of greater explanation as to why I'm, I'm coming up the way I'm coming up with a no vote on this. Project.
Thank you, Mr. Delisle. That was great. I appreciate the added detail and certainly knowing. You could take issue with the thoughtfulness of of your appraisal of the application and the issues that that we are, are faced with here. That said. It appears this board is not prepared to approve this application. So. I, I guess there are two options and I don't know what the, the second one, I need a little more explanation. And I will ask Caitlin or Andy, other than continuing this. Is there, it, what's the other options? It withdrawal without prejudice or? I'm just trying to get an idea of what options to present.
Yeah, sure. That, that would be an option.
And what does, what is the advantage of doing that versus a continuance for something that we keep coming to the same? Conclusion.
Yeah, I, I, I don't know that that's apparent, but it, it seems like there's a question here as to whether or not the board would approve any. Sort of dormant there, I guess, and and the conversations that I've seen thus far. So I don't know whether a continuance or withdrawal without prejudice would allow any other application to be. Considered acceptable by the board, but. But there are those technical options, procedural options available to the applicant, even if they don't directly produce a approval.
What's the time? Now, if we, if we voted it down, it would be what, two years before the applicant could come back?
Yeah, we would not expect to see this application for another two years.
If, if it was withdrawn by the applicant with without prejudice, then what is the timeframe?
They could apply, you know, next month to come back again.
Thomas Bampus, you, I'm, I'm trying to. Get the two options out here. Apparently, before going to the formal vote, which would block this down for two years. There's an option to ask in continuance, which would push this out. I believe probably into November sometime, given how the calendar looks through October. Or you could request a withdrawal without prejudice to kind of reconvene your thoughts and, and plans and. And rework because, frankly, for them hearing from the board and seeing from the board, having gone through this multiple times. I just don't see the application as it is, as, as making this pass the board right now. So I, I've continuance to try to rework this. If, if it's granted may help. I don't know if it does, I, I, you know, but that's, there are two options. I guess I want to present you and it's to ask for a continuance. Or ask to withdraw without prejudice and kind of come up with another plan.
If, if I could ask a question. What? More or less, what would the ZBA approve?
I think this was the question you asked.
Because I will try to tailor it if I have a little guidance to, is it? The section of the dormer is viewed as too tall. Is it a concern about the? Roof pitch change? I could ask the engineer. Originally, I had asked the engineer to put a two foot knee wall to see if that would accomplish the six foot eight. And they put in a two and a half. Now, I don't know if there's some shorter wall that can accomplish. You know, I'm like, I'm, I'm, I'm trying to get a feel for what could I do? That would allay Mr. Swanton and Mr. Delisle's. Comments. What, what could I possibly do?
I think the board has been pretty clear on. Their thoughts in detail on, on this, on the dormer in general. I don't know, and I, the option for Mr. Swanton and Mr. Delisle to give further information, but I think. You've been pretty thorough if you wanted to answer that question.
Well, it did sound like Mr. Delisle had more or less homework questions for me. Like, there was something that was brewing. And then we went on to the next board member. I mean, if there's something that I need to research, I can do that. The other question that I have is if I withdraw without prejudice. And I bring back another design that's different than the dormer, does that have to go back to historic? Or review?
I don't believe so, but I'm going to defer to the experts in the room. Either Miss Planchet or.
It depends on whether or not you're within the window to act underneath the prior demolition delay. So I don't know if Jennifer wants to add anything to that.
No, that was, that's my statement. As long as it's within the six month window, it's still under the current demo delay. But should that next hearing not wrap up and have an approval prior to that expiration? It would need to go back to the historic commission.
Okay, and that's what I didn't understand about six months. I didn't actually know what that meant. So the six month is like a grace period extension of the demo delay?
It, it is the period during which you need to act upon the demo delay. Really, or the, the fact that you have sat out the demo delay, you have a six month period. During which to carry out or begin your project. And for this project, you need ZBA relief. And that's why I'm saying you would need to have a. Complete ZBA hearing prior to the expiration of the sixth month period of time.
If I could for Patty Anne, that the ordinance previously had indicated, it was essentially read read as a one time release from demolition delay. In the new, a project wouldn't necessarily have to go back to the historic mission. That was amended in recent years to require a shorter leash, if you will, on projects. Such that if they were not undertaken in a shorter period of time after their demolition delay had been released. There'd be an obligation to go back to the historic commission and and once again do the demolition delay review.
So the clock, the clock is ticking now on getting something done while your initial demo delay. Had been done. I don't know how many months are left with that. Five months, four months?
The demo delay expired in August. But because of COVID, I have talked to a number of GCs and they are. Flat out busy until, well, a number of them are flat out busy until summer.
We first have to approve any plans before we have to worry about GCs, I guess, would be, would be my thought. But I, I think the board has been pretty clear again on, on what may or may not work. I think. I think, you know, tonight.
And I'll, and I'll try to make revisions to this plan.
I'm inclined to do, you know, I, I guess, one more. Continuance. It's up to the board to, to allow that.
I also ask about Mr. Swanton's specific. Issues.
Swan, do you care to give any further detail than you already gave for the record on the issues you had?
Yeah, sure. I can't remember. I mean, you're two and a half feet from a major street. I can't remember us ever approving an upward extension to an F feet from a major street. And, and so I'm not sure any revision you're going to do is going to, is going to satisfy me. I, I. You know, we don't want to treat you differently and more harshly because you have, some people would say you have the oldest house in town from the 1600s, by the way. But on the other hand, we shouldn't also make it, if make it easier for that reason. I think we need to treat all houses equally. And I cannot remember ever approving a, a building that's two and a half feet off of a, of a major road. That somebody wants to go up. So. And then the other issue I had was your, the person you share the house with. Pretty rare for them to send us a letter saying, you know, we really don't support what's happening on the other side. So. To me, there are two big problems there that I don't know how you can fix. You have a house that's extremely close to a street and you're asking the board to do something that we just generally don't do. So I, I don't, you know, maybe some of my colleagues are comfortable, but I, I am not comfortable. You know, we had one on Howard Street two years ago that was like, I think like 19 feet off the road and we said no to that. And they had to come back with something that was somewhat different. This is two and a half feet off of a road. So I, I, I can't get away from that. This, this is. No, that's, that's, that's my big concern. You're asking us to go upward in something we don't generally approve.
Thank you, Mr. Swan. So. So that's. We've heard from both board members who were. Concerned over the, over the most recent application now. Again. A continuance has to be voted on, you know, we both have, we have to vote on the whole thing, withdrawal without prejudice or continuance. So. I think I've tried to help you out with the. What you're looking at as the likely outcome of, of the application in general and. I will leave it up to you that we can go to a vote. If we do go to a vote and it is turned down, then you are. Unable to come back with a proposal for two years. That also puts you out of your six month grace window. So it kind of starts everything all over again. So. I'll leave it there and, and ask what you, what would you like to do?
Well, I am going to go for a continuance and. If that's possible. And maybe I just don't do the dormer. Maybe I just do a roof pitch change with skylights. But we're not, that to me is still an upward extension if I'm correct with that. And would comply with this application.
That would be an upward extension. Other than that, I, I don't want to. I really don't think it's proper to comment anything that you might do, but I would, if you'd like to request a continuance, I'll put that before the board.
Yes, please.
So first of all, we have a request for a continuance of this application.
Might I suggest, just Patty Anne, how long might it take for you to circle back with something for the board, just to allow enough time for you to prepare something and the board to receive it? I, I suspect that going two weeks out wouldn't be sufficient. So I don't know how, what does make sense for a date.
Yeah, I was going to hope for at least a month. A month or six weeks. I don't know how that falls for dates.
I think we're proud to put it in November because I know that the second meeting in October is half full of this. Tonight, plus whatever comes up. So, and so that would be first meeting November. And I'm not sure that date.
And that'll be the ninth.
The ninth.
Could I interject one thing just to, to maybe help out Ms. Bampus? And I don't know the, I don't know if this is correct and maybe Andy might be able to, to opine on this. The, the governor, at some point for COVID, put in a tolling period. Or the, the legislature obviously had a hand in that as well, but there's, there's a tolling period for certain types of orders. Andy, is this something that would, that that tolling period would apply to the, the, the? The demo delay.
I'd want to check with KP Law, but I don't believe it would have much effect in this instance, I think, based on the expiration of the pandemic order. But I know Jennifer has had to monitor that to, to some extent as well, but I'd, I'd want to consult with KP Law in the particular situation here.
Okay, thank you.
And so before, we have a request for continuance. Mr. Bampus, would you say to the ninth, November ninth meeting?
Yes.
So applicants requesting a continuance of this application to November ninth of this year.
When I add it, Mr. Delisle or anyone else on the board, if there's a particular question relative to tolling on a particular application, if you could articulate that. Sufficiently and then perhaps the email out to me, I'm happy to pass it on to KP Law. There's a particular question in a particular instance or, or permit involved.
Okay, would anyone? Leave with a motion to continue this to the ninth.
Greg Bennet. I will move that application 2021 dash 2620 or to Neptune Street be continued to November nine. 2021.
Okay.
Jagen and I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion to continue made by Mr. Bennet, second Mr. Chagrin, move this application to continue it to 11, nine, 21. We'll go to a vote, Mr. Delisle.
Yes.
Mr. Swanton.
Sure.
Mr. Chagrin.
Yes.
Mr. Bennet.
Yes.
I will vote yes. It's only affirmative. This matter is continued to the ninth of November. Thank you all.
Very good. I'm logging back on. Thank you, Mr. Moore and.
Hang the gavel.
I, picking up where, where we left off, the next public, the next public hearing that's on our agenda. Is the public hearing on McDonald's USA LLC care of Bowler Engineering, William Lucas, representing Bowler Engineering. This is a matter of 37 story avenue and its docket 2021 dash 54, a special permit for nonconformities to upgrade the sites. Drive through features and renovations of the building exterior. May we hear from the applicant? And I believe, Mr. Lucas, you have the floor, sir.
Good evening, members of the board. Bill Lucas with Bowler, or formerly Bowler Engineering. Representing McDonald's and specifically the site at 37 story avenue. Just to step back and give everybody the standard speech, basically McDonald's has been. Undergoing a total rebranding program, both in New England and nationally for all of their restaurants. And we've been doing this for them over the past five years. So at this point in time, we're nearing the end of that program. But there are some sites that continue to linger and this may be one of those. And this may be one of those, but hopefully we'll make some progress this evening. So with that said, let me go through some of the scope items that McDonald's hopes to accomplish as part of their rebranding. First, there's generally three major points that they'd like to tackle. The first one is to upgrade drive-through features at, at each of their buildings. And specifically with respect to the ordering point items to bring those into a more modern standard, as well as sometimes they look at car spacing and/or an optional second drive-through. The second drive-through and the car spacing will not be part of this application. So really it is just an upgrading of some of the drive-through and ordering features for this site. Secondly, they'll look at renovations to remodel the exterior and interior of the existing building. Those, you know, improvements generally include updates to the architectural style to meet McDonald's current standards, which have a more modern contemporary look. And again, this is to, you know, part of their rebranding program. They're going to bring a lot of those McDonald's from the fifty, sixty, seventies all into conformance with one another. So therefore they're moving forward with a singular rebranding look for all of their restaurants. As part of that, you'll see, you know, signage updates. And specifically on this building, there are some of those signage updates. We'll be removing five signs from the walls of the building and replacing them with three new wall signs smaller in total area than what you see out there today. And all in compliance with the allowable requirements set forth by the ordinance. To that point, there will be no changes to the existing freestanding sign that will remain as is. And the last part of that, you know, their goals for the rebranding program is to provide, you know, what ends up being minor site improvements. And then some interior improvements within the building itself for ADA or accessibility requirements and regulations. And inside the building, they look at things like entry points, the bathrooms, accessible routes to, you know, confirm that all of those are brought up to code. And then on the outside of the building, we will be looking at things like the parking stalls and accessible routes to and from those stalls to the building. With that said, we started having conversations with city staff and we went through a zoning review conducted by Jennifer and she had provided us with a, a document that summarized her review and noted that we would have to go for a special permit for non-conformities. And we made that application and in, in general, what that is looking for is to state that we're not having any further intensification or substantially detrimental impact as far as our upward extension, which is part of the customer order speaker canopy structure. It's a long name. But we'll get through it. I'll probably shorten it to structure throughout the evening, just for everybody's reference. If you don't mind, if we could zoom in a little bit more on the building itself, I want to give everybody a little bit of context. So at the bottom of, of the page, you can see there's story avenue. That short segment, wall segment of the building that parallels story avenue is actually the rear of the restaurant. So then the opposite side or the, what is actually the southern side of the site would be the front. You will see on the right-hand side of the page, there are three trees. And immediately adjacent to that side of the building, that is the end of the drive-through operation itself. So there are two windows. The first closest two-story street itself is the actual payment window. The second one is where you would actually pick up your order. On the opposite side of the building or the left-hand side of the page, that is what they would call the entry point to the building. And you'll see, you know, there's some striping that leads from the accessible parking spaces to the main entry point for the general parking field to the building. All right. So with all of that said, let's get back to the, the drive-through operation and the upward extension. The drive-through operation, as you can see on the plan right now, it functions in a counterclockwise or from left to right all around the rear of the building. If you look at the lower left-hand corner of the building, there is a small tan square that's kind of angled off the corner. That is specifically the non-conformity that we're going to speak to. In the existing conditions that are, you know, on site right now, the drive-through is configured in the same manner that you see on the proposed plan in front of you tonight. So we're not changing anything with respect to the layout of the drive-through operation or the location of the facilities for ordering. So where you see that tan square right now, that is the proposed customer order speaker canopy structure. And that is essentially in the same exact location where a car would pull up today and make a order. And then proceed to the right-hand side of the building to pay and then pick up their order. With that said, if you don't mind flipping to the next slide, I want to give everybody a little visual of what that proposed customer order speaker canopy, this is it. So this structure is essentially ten feet in height. Then has a small canopy on top of it, which is three and a half by, let's say, eight feet or roughly twenty-five square foot of canopy. On the post itself, there is, there are speakers and a microphone to actually convey the order. So what you have out there today is basically just a post, probably half of that height. And now we're coming in with a new post and canopy over top of it. So the customer has that additional convenience of a canopy over their head while they're making an order. So it hopefully eliminates or, you know, decreases some of that inclement weather conditions as you're you know, making your order and before you proceed around the building. This is, this is essentially what we're proposing at this time. It is consistent with everything that McDonald's has done throughout their entire rebranding program. I've, we've never had any issues with it. If, if there's a concern with that in terms of the safety of it, prior to making an order at this point, there are, there is in this case, one clearance bar that proceeds this location. So if there is a vehicle that exceeds the height to get under the canopy, it will be identified by that clearance bar. Therefore, the vehicle can exit and circulate around to park and then go inside because it will not be able to pass safely under the structure itself. With all that said, considering that there are, you know, no substantial changes to the drive-through configuration and the location of the proposed customer order speaker canopy structure with respect to the existing speaker and menu board. It, it is, in my opinion, that the proposed structure will not intensify or be detrimental to the neighborhood as an existing non-conformity.
Hey, was that the, Mr. Lucas, was there anything further you wanted to add? Or is that the conclusion of the presentation?
That, that's the conclusion. I'll open it up to everyone else.
Okay, thank you, sir. We're, we'll circle back in a moment. We'll go through our process. Okay, so we will close that portion of the public hearing and thank you, Mr. Lucas, for the, the detailed presentation and materials. We will now go into our public comments section and I'll ask Andy Port to again, put up the slide on public comments. Folks should be familiar with that by now. And if you're not, we just ask that you kindly keep your remarks to a, to a minimum, a minimum of, or I should say to not exceed about two minutes. We do have some discretion. So we try to exercise, you know, courtesy and restraint, but we will do so as, as politely as we can. We ask that you give your name and address as well for our keeper of the records. So with that, does anyone wish to speak in connection with the application? Either for or against, doesn't matter, just raise your hand by indicating the bottom hand raise icon on your Zoom screen and I will recognize you and we will, we will hear from you. Seeing no hands, going once, going twice. Okay, I'm going to close that portion of the public hearing and we will go to questions from the board. And, you know, I'm going to kick off if that's okay. Usually we start with Mr. Moore. But Mr. Lucas, if I could just ask a quick question. Can you explain to us once more if a vehicle, though I'm sure it's rare, given the height of the, that order, the order apparatus, the tower, if a vehicle is taller, let's say it's a large SUV or, you know, a larger truck. How will the, the operator of the vehicle be alerted to that unless you've already described it and I just missed it?
Yeah, I, I tried, I tried to describe it, but if you could go back to the first slide, I may be able to identify that. Again, it's kind of, you're going to have to zoom in on that lower left-hand corner of the building. There is a site feature that is a clearance bar that we will install prior to a couple more clicks in, if you don't mind. Because I want to, we may be able to point it out pretty closely. So it is not going to be very clear on this plan. So if you're looking at the, the back corner, there you see some sidewalk, gray sidewalk, almost in the shape of a seven. We'll say just below there, there's three shrubs and a mulch bed. There will be a clearance bar located that will hang out over it, the drive aisle as you approach that structure, which is, is set at an elevation consistent with the elevation of the canopy itself. And if your vehicle would impact that clearance bar, the driver would be notified clearly by the thump of that impact. And then he would have the ability to back out and traverse around the site, back to a parking spot on the other side. Is that clear?
It is. Yeah. How high is that clearance bar?
It is, I would have to look at the detail on the plan, but it is set at an elevation that it is, I believe, consistent with the height of the, of the actual structure, the canopy structure itself. So therefore it, you know, McDonald's doesn't want anybody to hit that structure. So they want to make sure it's identified that a, a car would impact that prior to reaching that location.
Okay. All right. Well, I'm going to, we'll, we'll, we'll cycle through and hear from the rest of my colleagues and see if there are any additional questions, but thank you for that explanation.
Fair enough.
Again, thank you, Mr. Lucas. So in questions from the board, Mr. Moore.
Thank you, Mr. Chafetti. One question, and it has to do with the, the ADA compliant. So in our notes, it was noted that you were working with the city's ADA coordinator to ensure the site plan is compliant. I didn't get whether that was completed or whether you had further comments on that. I know you want it to be compliant, obviously, but could you just bring me up to date on how the meeting has gone, where we are in that process?
So I did not specifically have a, a meeting with him on that. Generally, ADA compliance within the building itself would be reviewed as part of the building permit application process, which we have not gone through. What we have designed from a site plan standpoint, site plan being outside of the building itself, we believe is compliant. We've had it reviewed externally by AAB in advance of this hearing, not, you know, specific to Newburyport itself, but, you know, the governing board at AAB for the layout and location of the parking stalls and the path of accessibility from those stalls to the building itself. As you may not know, there, there is a considerable slope within the existing parking field on the left-hand side, page left of the building that exceeds the minimum allowable parking slope in an accessible parking area. In order to combat that, we had to relocate the existing stalls, non-compliant existing stalls across the drive aisle to an area where it was less impactful to provide compliant ADA stalls and then have that person or persons traverse across the aisle and to the building itself. There is, if, if you're not aware, there is considerable grade change from the parking stalls to the finished floor of the existing building, making it very challenging to locate parking that would be compliant without excessive construction activities to, to make that happen.
And then as far as the construction of, of the ramping, that's all pretty straightforward as far as the degree
of elevation and all that. So it's Correct, correct. Everything should be, you know, in, in terms of slope compliance, widths and, and things of that nature.
No further questions.
Right. Thank you, Mr. Moore. Mr. Delisle.
I have no questions, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Delisle, Mr. Swanton.
And nor do I.
Thank you.
Mr. Swanton, Mr. Channick.
I, I just had one question. I noticed in the the setback chart, it indicated that the minimum rear setback used to be nineteen and a half and now it's twenty point nine. So it seems as though it got better. However, I would have thought that that overhang would be more into the rear or side yard setback, depending on the angle. Is there an explanation for that?
So I, let's look at a couple of different things. In terms of the order point overhang that we're referring to, it is actually not located within any of the setbacks. Again, it fronts or it is closest to story street, which in our opinion, is the front yard setback for this lot. The rear yard is on the opposite side or the angled side, which is the front of the building from McDonald's standpoint. So you have the front of the building in the rear yard. And that is what you're looking at. So if you're looking at the building, the top right-hand corner extends beyond that rear yard setback. At, I think you quoted a roughly twenty feet and previously it was nineteen. So what has happened is that the existing building had a roof overhang and canopy on the front of the building that was extending into the rear setback. We have pulled that back because again, it's more this modern architecture. It reduces some of the canopy overhang, building overhangs. And yes, to our benefit, it, it is less impactful along that rear setback.
Good. I appreciate the explanation. I was, I was assuming that the, the overhang for the for the car drive was in the rear, but I, I understand your explanation. Thank you. I have no other questions.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bennett, any questions from you?
Two, can you describe the illumination on the on your canopy there, please?
I believe it is just an LED downward lit from the top of the canopy over the vehicle, like the driver's side of the vehicle. Just for purposes of enough illumination that the operator inside the McDonald's can clearly see the person making the order.
Thank you. I think I have a sense of it, but how, how large is that drive-through sign there on top of the canopy? Or is that not a sign? On your, on, on your plan, it says drive-through above the canopy. Maybe that's
So, so yeah, on, on the detail that you're looking at here.
Yes.
Yeah, it says order here.
It says drive-through, but I guess my, my only question is how big is it? It appears to be a foot, maybe less. I'll tell it's I'm looking for the designation on the plan itself, the number.
I don't know that I have that at my fingertips. I think it's rather small. I, I, and we're talking about it's, you know, probably somewhere in the order of eight inches tall, maybe, and maybe a foot and a half long. So
There are no other additional signs being proposed?
There are three wall signs being proposed on the building. So just to back up, there's five existing wall signs on the building. So we will reduce that down to three wall signs. And yes, this is great, the on the upper left-hand corner of this exhibit, you'll see that is the front elevation of the building. That's the one that faces the rest of the shopping center. And what you see there is their standard M or Golden Arch logo. That is roughly fourteen square foot boxed, a boxed area. I forget exactly what the actual square footage of the individual M is itself, but we could always look that up if, if you needed that information. On the top right of that exhibit, that is the rear elevation of the building. That is the elevation that would face Story Street. And that M logo again on the rear. So they can have some kind of signage to the street itself, but just be mindful that that this building sits down in elevation from the street itself. So you know, the McDonald's in some areas feels like it's a little bit in a hole with respect to vehicles on Story Street. And then the, at the bottom of this exhibit, so this would be the drive-through side or planned right side of the building. Where there is another M logo, again, fourteen square foot in, in size, where people or any vehicles and patrons to the shopping center itself would be coming in. They would be able to see that logo on their left-hand side as they approach. So they understand that that building has been identified. The only side of the building where there are no proposed signs is the actual left-hand side of the building where that larger parking field has been shown. So unfortunately, what they typically like to do is put an M logo on that section of the building where it's the main entry. So people have a little bit of identification as to where the entry point is. But based on everything that's written in the code, we wanted to be as compliant as possible and unfortunately would not allow us to put a fourth sign on the building.
That's all I have. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Very good. Thank you, Mr. Bennet. I have no further questions either. And I thank you all for your questions and your answers, Mr. Lucas. We can close that portion of the public hearing and we will now move into deliberations. And I'll just remind the board, since we are deliberating a special permit for non-conformities when we're deliberating this, the board has to find that the applicant, the application will not be more sorry, there will not be more substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the pre-existing non-conforming user structure. This is under nine B two. And I'll also point out that the zoning administrator has confirmed with us that the project does not, of course, trigger any additional tree or sidewalk ordinances. Since there are no city-owned sidewalks adjacent to the project. So with that, we'll launch into our deliberations and we'll start with, with Mr. Moore.
Thank you, Chairman Chappetti. I thought this, you know, it's, it's a detailed presentation, a few changes, a lot of updates to, to bring the, the building up to speed with the current, current look of the McDonald's franchises. So given that there's no new non-conformity being presented here in these plans, just an extended upward side yard and rear yard setback. And the fact that it's, it's being streamlined in my mind and, you know, in a shopping center and down. As the applicant said, in elevation from, from story of there, there's no way size and massing comes into play and I can't see it being detrimental in any way to the neighborhood. So I can support it.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Moore. Mr. Delisle.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think Mr. Moore said it well, and I can also support this project.
Thank you, Mr. Delisle, Mr. Swanton.
I agree. Mr. Moore said it well, and I too can support this project.
Thank you, Mr. Swanton. Mr. Shannon.
I agree with my colleagues and I can support this application. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And Mr. Bennet.
I will agree with my colleagues and I too support this application.
Thank you. And the voting members on this application, before we head into the vote, are Mr. Moore, Mr. Delisle, Mr. Swanton, Mr. Shannon and myself. And we will, I too don't have anything further to add and I feel it's a, it's a well-presented application, meets the criteria. So we can close that portion of the public hearing and we will move to a vote. Do we have a motion to approve the special permit for non-conformities?
I'll make a, I'll make a motion to approve a special permit for non-conformities to thirty-seven story of this application, twenty twenty-one dash fifty-four. I cut someone off, sorry.
That's okay. It was me. I'll second it, Mr. Delisle.
Thank you, Mr. Moore, seconded by Mr. Delisle, calling the roll, the vote, Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Delisle.
Yes.
Mr. Swanton.
Yes.
Mr. Shannon.
Yes.
Rob Champetti, I vote yes. That's five of the affirmatives. The ayes have it, the motion carries and the special permit is approved. Thank you, Mr. Lucas. And thank you, members of the board. Moving to our last public hearing this evening, this is the matter of a special permit for non-conformities, docket twenty twenty-one dash five-three, twelve Horton Street, Lisa Adams and David Miller care of Lisa Mead, Mead Tellerman and Costa LLC. Presenting on behalf of the applicants this evening is attorney Brian Weiner. On behalf of, of Mead Tellerman and Costa. And I believe we also have Kevin Latati, who is the architect, who's also listed possibly speaking as well. With that counsel, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, Mr. Stairman. I, I hope everyone can hear me. So this is Brian Winner from Mead Tellerman and Costa, standing in for attorney Lisa Mead. And with me this evening is Kevin Latati. Kevin, are you there?
I am here.
Terrific. So it's our pleasure to represent the owners of the property and your applicants before you tonight, Lisa Adams and David Miller twelve Horton Street. This is their, their home. And just by way of a brief contextual introduction. You may have seen in our filings, it was an unfortunate incident that led to some of the decisions in front of you today. And that's that back in February, there were some difficulties at the house furnace and that led to a frozen pipe and caused some significant water damage. So they're now looking to do some, to some work. In part to remediate some of that damage, but also in part to improve where they're looking to do this upwards expansion. So with that, if we could maybe just move to the next slide. And then what I'd like to do is just go through these slides and and save my part for this and then turn it over to Mr. Latati for some more details from his perspective as the architect on the project. So what the application before you is for a special permit for an upwards extension of an existing non-conforming home. And you can see the dimensional notes here on this. This is in the R two district as well as a demolition control overlay. The lot area normally would require ten thousand square feet. It's significantly below that. Frontage would be ninety, we have fifty-four. The front yard and the western side yard setbacks are also below the requirement at five point six and five point seven respectively. So we have a non-conforming home here on this property. What you'll see on the next slide, when we get there is that the project is actually fairly minor project. It's actually only going to be altering about sixteen percent of the exterior wall. So it falls below the threshold for the DCOD twenty-five percent trigger for a special permit. So we're, we're not we're not triggering that requirement or even close to it. So if we could just move to the next slide. So what the project is, just in sort of general terms here is, as I mentioned, there was a pipe burst and some damage in the current state of the home is that it's, it's uninhabitable, uninhabitable, excuse me. And it has remained so since February. So what's being proposed, proposed and what you'll see on the, the next series of slides. Is that they're going to remove what's an existing second story bump out on the rear side of the structure. So nothing you see from the street. This is all on the rear portion of the dwelling. And what they're going to do is construct a new second story bump out above what is an existing bump out on the first floor. So it just goes up. A portion of it is you'll see in the, the elevations and in the slides to come. You know, follows the existing roof line. It doesn't go beyond that. It doesn't go above that. And it actually drops down. And you know, as you travel towards the rear of the site, so it's, it's a more diminutive and in comparison to the existing home. And like I said, it, it drops down. And although you know, some interior changes are being made as a result of the damage, you know, to bring things up to code and to move some spaces around. So some square footage is being lost just by virtue of moving a staircase and doing some wiring and some, some other changes interiorly. This addition ultimately, you know, results in the addition of about a hundred and ninety square feet. So you'll see in the drawings, it's, it's pretty modest compared to the building. It's a small bump out on the second floor. So it did constitute, of course, a roof line change. So the historic commission received an application and actually voted on it on the twenty-third, so very recently. And is issued a release on that. So we are clear through the historic commission. So if we could go to the next slide, please. So these are the existing conditions, the zoning plan, as you can see, and up in the upper right-hand corner, the the table there showing all the different dimensions and just looking from the top down here, you can get a sense of where that rear yard bump out is. There's an existing deck just beyond it. But it's that rear portion of the left of, of the drawing here that you'll see is where the upwards expansion is going to be. Go to the next one. So this is the facade demolition in the back. So you can see from the sort of dashed lines there, where the addition is going to go and where the removed or proposed sections to be removed are going to be. To give you a sense of sort of how it's following the roof line out towards the rear and then drops down to where that bump out section is going to be compared to what's what's currently existing there. Then in the upper left-hand corner, you can get a sense of you know, what the existing conditions would look like and then where the new section would be added on there. Could move to the next one. So here you have the elevations with the addition. So you can sort of compare the last slide to this one. And now this is the completed. So you can see how that if I noted it earlier, the important theme here is that the footprint is not changing. There's nothing going out in any direction except upward. So the existing footprint is going to be maintained. There's no new non-conformities. So this is strictly just the simple upward expansion and, and nothing else with respect to those rear yard or side setbacks. So there you can see the elevations of where the new structure is proposed to go and sense of how it'll look. On the next slide, you have some of the floor plans for that. And we've noted the square footage is there. So I remarked earlier, it's a total addition of a hundred and ninety square feet. So you can see that noted in the table in the upper right-hand corner. And you can get a sense of what the, the floor plan is going to look out with that layout is going to look out with the addition. First floor, of course, on the, the left-hand side of that drawing and the second floor bump out addition on the, the right-hand side of it. And onto the next slide, if you could, just a just a meme map sketch here to, to sort of orient you and locate the building. So you can see from Horton Street, you know, where the, the frontage is drawn, this portion where this bump out is going to be on the second floor. It's facing the back. So we're not talking about a corner lot where we're just talking about this, this back end corner sort of towards the interior of this block here. So it's nothing that can really be seen. You know, from a public way, from the side or from the front, really just facing the butters backyards there. And the next slide, give you a sense of the dwelling that we're talking about here from the front. Looking at the, the right-hand side of the building and you can kind of see towards the end there where the driveway is right behind that car where the first floor bump out is. The next floor, same thing, or excuse me, next slide, same thing. A view from the other angle on this slide. And now the next one will give you a real sense of what, you know, the existing conditions here and where those bump outs are going to be constructed. So you can see the first floor. Now, just behind the deck as it walks up to that, that first floor bump out, you can see the, the second floor. There's the little bump out with a chimney there. As you saw in the earlier plans, that's the part that's being removed. And that's where the, the upwards addition is going to go. And the next slide will show the same thing from just a slightly different angle, sort of looking back from the other direction. So you can get a sense of that. From that bump out going up, that's essentially being enclosed. So it's not, it's not reaching further into the backyard or further into the side yard. It's just going up. And lastly, on this final slide, and I'm sure we'll circle back to this later, but after we, we hear from Mr. Latati and field any questions, we'll get into the special permit. Criteria that you'll have to consider at the end here and obviously under section nine B two A, really just two fundamental criteria that there's no new non-conformities being added. That is the case. We're not creating any new non-conformities. And second, that it won't be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. You know, as we've just explained and as we've sort of bullet pointed in a couple of different ways here. There's really no detrimental impact to the neighborhood and one important thing to highlight here is that you've received and I hope you all have in your packages letters of support. A number of abutters have written in. And as far as we understand, there's a, there's a consensus of support for this project. So we feel we, we have, we have some good direction from them and we feel that I feel this is also a good improvement for the site. And obviously, you know, with this construction, the Ms. Adams and Mr. Miller will be able to reoccupy their home. So it's certainly something they're looking forward to, I'm sure. So with that, Mr. Latati, if you're ready and I could turn it over to you and you can describe some of the, the more detailed and design aspects of the construction.
If we can go to the drawing, I think it shows number five in the sequence. Yes, thanks. I just want to point out, I'm sure the commission has looked at these drawings and are familiar with the site. But I want to point out the upper left hand is the existing elevation from Horton Street, which that elevation will not change at all. We are keeping that what, what is shown in this drawing is the extent of the demolition of the existing building to accommodate the renovation addition. The, the reddish pink color indicates errors of the structure that are being modified and the dotted lines are what is being added, just to help you graphically understand it. The section which is on drawing two to the far left is a porch that was enclosed. And the idea here is just go vertically up and what instigate, instigated this, this pushing out the addition was that the current stair in the house, which is something that Lisa and David have have often struggled with is typical of eighteen nineties stairway construction of entering at a, a winders up, then a straight, very steep run to winders to the second floor. Impossible to take furniture up, let alone being hard on the knees as, as we all age. Currently they get their furniture up by lifting it up over the railing of that second floor deck and then through the back doors of that. What's the back porch? So in our design and, and the, the desires of Lisa and David were to update the stairs to be more both code compliant, but also more approachable from moving the furniture to the second floor. So that's what pushed us with this idea pushing the house back to accommodate the change of the stairs. And as you all know, when you change stairs to have a lesser rise and, and the steepness of the stair, they push further out. So it pushed the building back. Certainly in looking from a design point of view is also keeping the structure to feel that it fits in its place in the neighborhood. And that was the the idea and the design. Also you see in the drawing two, we're essentially building up over what drawing two, we're essentially building up over what was the original first floor and, and in my mind, uh, completing a building that may have once wanted to look this way, but you know, that's from an architectural point of view, but also being in mind of not driving the building out further or, uh, other than going vertically up, not going horizontally out and creating further non-compliance. Um, the next slide, number six, that's just showing the proposed elevations. Again, uh, saw, uh, drawing one is from the front. You don't, that doesn't change. And you can see drawing three has the, you know, pulling the building into, uh, I, I think a more architecturally appropriate structure and also accommodates the needs for the clients. Um, the square footages, I think that was explained. You can see in the images how the, uh, building that if you go to slide, uh, scroll down so I can see what the numbers are for it to help you out. The, the back view, uh, number twelve. So certainly, again, this isn't something you see from the street, but the impact to the neighborhood that those, uh, falling structures now become more, uh, incorporated to the style of the house, at least in my opinion. So, you know, it, it, uh, impacts the back of the yard, but I don't think, uh, impacts the neighborhood. Where it's pretty much facing, uh, Lisa and David's backyard. Uh, uh, is, are there any questions? Hopefully I've explained it well.
Okay. Um, I, I think, well, we, we may have some questions, Mr. Latati, and I'll, uh, we'll circle back with you in just a moment. But, uh, thank you for that presentation and, uh, attorney winner. Was there anything further you wanted to add before we, uh, we close the presentation portion?
Uh, no, that's it for our presentation now, and, uh, we're certainly happy to answer any questions.
Very good. Thank you, counselor. Uh, okay. So while moving, uh, we'll close that portion of the public hearing. We'll go into public comment, though it seems, uh, seems perfunctory to do with only five attendees in, in the audience. But, uh, putting up on the screen, you'll see the public comment slide with, uh, the rules of the road. Anyone wishing to speak in connection, please, uh, sh- uh, show a, um, a show of hands and we'll recognize you to be heard. Seeing no hands, going once, going twice. Um, seeing still no hands, I will close that portion of the public hearing and we'll move on from the public comment to questions from the board. Uh, and we'll begin with, uh, with, um, Mr. Moore.
Thank you, Chairman Chappeti. And if we could stay right here on slide twelve, this is really helpful. So to help me with, uh, three dimensional picture. So what's being proposed is, is basically taking that smaller box, pulling it out over the deck. And then extending, extending the piece behind that out to meet it flush with the wall of the three casement windows. So the case and window with three panels.
Correct.
Perfect. Okay.
So basically, if you look at it from the old, uh,
Just extrude everything out.
Yeah, extrude it. What's that? The Play-Doh exclusion.
Exactly.
You just, you just extrude that out with the architectural detail, the historical detail, which to me is very important to keep the integrity of that. And then the, what's now the mud room was once a screen porch and now is the mud room. That will extend up with a lower roof ridge line to again, help bring that down and scale to the backyard.
Okay. I'm glad you mentioned the historical detail. Could you get into a little bit of the historical detail that you'd be preserving as you do that, I guess, around the?
Oh, absolutely. Um, this is kind of where I love working on old homes is, is to, to, i- if you look at the roof rake, the, the, uh, slanted boards that come down and the return, that will be replicated. So it has that integrity of the historic detail. Not what I call on the new construction of Russian eyebrow heavy shingled, uh, uh, ridge return. So replicate that same delicacy. And then if you look at the flare between the first floor and the second floor in the original house, and then where it's a, a flatter roof, which in the, where you see the three windows, that's the kitchen. We will continue that flare in our new construction. So we'll really feel that it's, um, part of the original building and what I would say the original building meant to be, but they hadn't gotten around to building it yet.
Great. Thanks. No further question for me.
Also, just, just to point out, you see the deck, how it comes out quite a bit. The deck won't be as, not that it matters for you and your square footage, but the, the deck area will be reduced more so that Lisa can have more garden, but that's another story.
Thank you.
Very good. Uh, thank you. Uh, moving on then, uh, Mr. Dela.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Mr. Latati, could you just speak, uh, quickly to the, uh, the materials that'll be used on the exterior? The windows, the, uh, clavards or shingles or what have you?
Certainly the, um, everything that's going on, the addition will match the, uh, existing. Shingles on the upper level, clavards on the lower level. All the existing windows we're having restored by Window Women of New England. I'm an advocate of preserving all windows, not replacing them. Uh, new windows will be, uh, gelled win windows, uh, wood windows, again, to match the existing. Uh, the existing sashes are two over one. We will match those with all the new windows.
Great. Thank you. That sounds excellent. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, thank you, Mr. Dela and Mr. Swanton.
Uh, yeah, um, yeah, I noticed a lot of, uh, support from the butters and one of them, I thought stressed, uh, something I've noticed because I live a couple of blocks from here. I go walking through here and this is a very uniformed street of Victorian houses. Um, of which this one is a good example. Also think this happens to be a very good example of, of a house expansion that does not change that, that amassing from the street kind of blends in really well. So I'm not surprised it got universal support from its, uh, neighborhood. I, you know, I'd like to think of a question, but I, I had one or two, but they've been asked. So I have none. Thank you.
Yeah, my, my wife says that I, uh, she's not a marketing expert and most people can't tell that I've been there when a project is done because it looks like it's, was always supposed to be that way. So not good marketing, but good for what I do and working in older homes.
Very good. Um, okay. Moving, um, along, Mr. Chan.
Let's see.
Good. No questions, Chair. Great presentation. Uh, I love the, uh, love the proposed addition. Uh, I think it's going to take a, a, a great looking Victorian home and make it better. Uh, I've got no other questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thanks. Thank you, Mr. Shannon. Mr. Bennet.
No questions.
All right. I have no further questions either. And the voting members on this, um, so we'll close that portion of the public hearing, go into deliberations. Um, you know, and it's premature to, uh, talk about the voting members just yet. Uh, but we are now in deliberations and again, we're deliberating, uh, the special permit for non-conformity. So I'll ask the members to just tailor your deliberations around the criteria on nine B two, uh, starting with Mr. Moore.
Thank you, Mr. Chappeti. I would, um, I guess just echo my colleague, Mr. Jagnis', uh, comments that it makes a, a, a great house or a nice house even better. Uh, plans are, are well thought out, um, well designed, like the, the care on the detail is great. Maybe not as familiar with the neighborhood as Mr. Swanton, but I did, uh, walk through and, and check it out and I, and I would agree that, um, I don't see any way that, that this addition is, could be seen as more detrimental in any way to the neighborhood. It's, it's barely visible from the street. It's, it's in comparison to the houses in the neighborhood on the street, it, there's not an excessive of massing that could even be considered. So no new non-conformities here, just extending upwards. And I don't see anything, uh, with respect to messing that is a problem. And I also, because of that reason, don't see it being any more detrimental than what's there already. In fact, it'll be an improvement as has been highlighted. A long way of saying I can improve it.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Moore. Mr. Dela.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, again, uh, well said by Mr. Moore. I'm going to concur with, uh, his assessment and I can support this project. Great job.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dela. Mr. Swanton.
I too concur for the reasons already mentioned.
Thank you, Mr. Swanton. Mr. Shannon.
Uh, ditto previous comments and I can support this application.
All right. And, uh, thank you, sir. And Mr. Bennet.
I endorse the observations of my colleagues.
All right. And, uh, I, I agree as well. I, I think the applicants met the criteria and I thank, uh, Mr. Latati and Attorney Winner, uh, for a carefully thought and thoughtful presentation. Uh, so I too can support it. Um, there are no other further deliberations from the board. I'll close that portion of the public hearing and I will now just mention our voting members are myself, Mr. Moore, Mr. Delile, Mr. Swanton and Mr. Shannon. Uh, and we are now in the, uh, vote section of the hearing. Do we have a motion to approve the special permit?
I'll make that motion, uh, to approve the special permit for non-conformities for twelve Horton Street, file number twenty twenty-one dash forty-three.
Second, Mr. Dela. Thank you, Mr. Swanton on the second. Motion's made by Mr. Delile, seconded by Mr. Swanton, calling the roll, Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Delile.
Yes.
Mr. Swanton.
Yes.
Mr. Shannon.
Yes.
And Rob Champetti, I vote yes. That's five of the affirmative. The eyes have it. The motion carries and the special permit, uh, is approved. Thank you, Attorney Winner and Mr. Latati. Uh, good luck to you.
Thank you, everyone. Good night.
Thank you. So, uh, members of the ZBA, that concludes, uh, our docket of public hearings for this evening. I'm going to close that section of our public hearing and go into our business meeting. We have one matter of business, uh, before us, which is the approval of, uh, Ms. Gretchen Joy's minutes of nine fourteen, September fourteenth. Uh, any comments or changes?
I have, I have one little one.
Okay.
Which just on page two, third paragraph, it says, uh, the, the barn would be visible high street. You're just missing the word from, from high street. Anyway, other than that, I thought they're very well written as usual.
Thank you. Uh, thank you, Mr. Swanton. Any other comments on the minute, on the minutes?
Okay. This is, uh, Mr. Shagman. I have, uh, two, uh, one of them's on page three, about halfway down. It was actually a comment made by me. I think it, it's a little wordy. It says he would prefer that it be moved back between one and two feet and twenty feet rather than the seventy-five feet. I think I was trying to indicate that, uh, I, I wasn't happy with the recommendation of one or two feet and that something like twenty feet would be better than the seventy-five feet proposed. However, uh, however, we want to word that. And then the last one was on page four. Um, it's the second from the last paragraph. It says, Mr. Champetti said he would have supported the application if it have been submitted. I think it should be if it had been submitted. Just a change in tense.
I appreciate you looking out for me. Thank you. Um, all right. Any other, uh, comments or changes? Okay. Uh, do we have a motion to approve the minutes with the modifications that have just been offered?
So moved.
And do we have a second?
Seconded.
All right. Motion's made and seconded on the, uh, motion to approve the minutes, uh, taking the role, Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Delile. M- Mr. Swanton.
Yes.
Mr. Shannon.
Yes.
Mr. Bennet.
Yes.
And I vote yes. That's six in the affirmative. The eyes have it. Motion carries, uh, with those changes, uh, the minutes are approved. So thank you all for that. Uh, I have no updates other than, um, uh, well, actually I do have an update. I, um, I will be taking sort of a short leave of absence in the next, I think, two meetings. I, um, I shared with, uh, some of you, but not all of you that, uh, during COVID, I'd applied to a graduate program and somehow amazingly they let me in. And, uh, so I, uh, I'll be going actually for a period of two and three weeks at a time, uh, full time, uh, on campus down in Cambridge. And I'll be there, not far, but far enough. Um, so I won't be, um, I won't be around the last, October first of, of November. And then that's going to happen again in March and then it'll happen a third time, um, for another two or three weeks, uh, in July. So I'll make sure I alert, um, our vice chair who will be, uh, running the show and I'll just let you know, obviously, Mr. Bennet, that means, uh, you're, uh, you're probably going to be working, uh, working a lot more in these, uh, these upcoming applications. But I just wanted to let you know that that sort of impacts us, um, starting the end of October. Um, so the net, the last meeting of October, first meeting of November, um, I won't be, I won't be in attendance for those reasons. And they look like a full docket. So my apologies in advance. I thought I would have shared this sooner, but it seemed like October. The end of October just seemed so far away until, until it wasn't. So.
You guys are stuck with me. Sorry.
Well, you're going to do a great job. Uh, any, uh, any other updates? Um, Andy, do you have any updates?
Um, the one thing that just comes to mind that board members might find of interest is the, uh, sure, by the way, the, uh, ZI ninety-five wind turbine zoning was, uh, was rejected. So, um, there wouldn't be any applications coming to you for that quarter, just in case you were curious. Um, that might've been expected. Um, at, at the end, at any rate, I thought short-term rental units, uh, since it's coming back online with the city council as a point of discussion might be of interest mainly because the ZBA does deal with more of the residential area of the city. And in this instance, um, on, uh, October twentieth, we've scheduled a joint public hearing, uh, as the city council would like to move forward with where they left off. You know, a little over a year ago, um, looking at regulation of short-term rental units, um, a zoning provision and a licensing provision in particular. Um, so that these, uh, uh, operations are licensed. There is an exemption for, for, uh, that sort of thing on Plum Island. Um, but I would suggest if you are at all interested in, in tracking or seeing where that goes, uh, looking at the planning department page under project updates, uh, we've posted as, uh, this particular zoning amendment, short-term rental units. Um, and I also posted there as a link to, um, the last city council meeting in which they, there was, uh, Councilman Colley provided a good overview of, uh, where they have come working with KP Law on some adjustments during the last year or so, at least the last few months. Um, as they're ready to come back and I, I think, I'll try to drop something before the end of the calendar year. Um, I'm not sure if that'll be feasible. Um, if there's any debate over the, the regulations, substance and, um, and details. But, um, if you're interested in tracking, um, those documents, uh, weighing in on them at all, um, you might want to attend the October twentieth hearing or otherwise, uh, weigh in.
Andy, I just want to point out one, um, one distinction. I, I don't think that Plum Island is exempt for the licensing piece of that.
That's correct. Yeah. Sorry. Uh, the, it's the home occupation or sorry, home, uh, uh, living in the, um, premises that, uh, is the key exemption. Um, but, uh, yeah, you're right. So, um, that you can read the language, the ordinance to see how it, how it really just exempts that portion, not the licensing or the tracking per se.
Right. Yeah. Yeah. It's like, uh, just a centralized, um, licensing and I will almost call it a registry so that, uh, you know, neighbors, uh, adjacent parties and, and other members of our community. I think the aspiration is that there's, uh, some accountability for who's who, especially, um, when there are third-party management, um, entities that will, um, you know, that manage from states away. Uh, you know, these properties, setting aside, I think the more common platforms like Airbnb and VRBO, there are other third parties that, um, don't have that kind of reach. So I think the, um, the intent of the way I read it was that, uh, the city's looking to, or city council's looking to try to create some centralized method of registration so that there's some way to reach the, you know, we know, I think that folks will have accountability on who, um, who's running a rental, a short-term rental, um, citywide. But, uh, everyone should take a look at it. Um, you know, it has some, some clunky parts in my personal opinion and I, I won't, I won't, um, project that onto any of you. But, but as I read it, it's, you know, it's, it's not yet ready for prime time in my opinion, but it looks like it's, it's headed that way with some, with some, um, you know, robust effort by many counselors that are looking to try to smooth out the sharpness of some of those edges. But like anything, it's a work in progress. Um, so we should all read it because it's all going to land on our lap in, in success in some form. Um, it, we would be dealing with some part of it. Um, all right. That's it. Uh, anything else? Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Well moved.
All right. Mr. Swanton. Very good. All those in favor, just, uh, and I, and I vote all those in favor. I.
Hi.
All right. Uh, any crazy people opposed to us adjourning? We stay together all night long. Just talk, you know, no? All right. Uh, listen, guys, thanks very much. Have a great evening and, um, I think we'll just continue to do this in-person piece, uh, or I should say the video piece. And, uh, you know, thanks, uh, very much Caitlin and Andy and Gretchen for all your work.
Thanks for everyone's help.
Bye-bye.
Thanks, guys.
Nice seeing everyone.
Good night.
Yeah.